Were you on vacation, Peter, or were you at work?
Uh, last time?
Yeah.
Uh, we had a family event.
A good event.
You look good, uh, on the computer.
Well, thank you. I feel a little bit like Matt's headroom.
Yep, that's gray hair to prove it.
Any hair is good. Doesn't matter regardless of color.
Touche.
All right. Call to order. September, wow, September, September 3rd, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Number, first thing on the agenda, 185 Mill Road TKZ LLC, request to release performance guarantee bonds totaling $6,000. Good evening, Mr. Zirico.
Good evening, everybody.
Monica, where are we at with this request?
Okay, so, um, Mr. Zirico is asking for a return of his $6,000 bond associated with the development of the, um, 185 203 Mill Road subdivision, that was, uh, not subdivision, sorry, land disturbance permit. Um, that was something you approved approximately, um, a year and a half ago, I want to say. I've gone out to the site, I made sure that everything is functioning correctly. There, he went before the Conservation Commission last week to request a, the return or the release from his COC. They released one, and the second one is a partial release, they kept about $1,500 for survivability of plants in the replica area. But other than that, everything that is on your plan has been built accordingly and is functioning.
We have a proper engineering sign-offs?
Yes.
Was there an application where there was, uh, like, four different properties? That, but one of them wasn't yours and...
Yeah, the, the previous owner subdivided their land into four, uh, and our four main lots. I bought two of them. But because of the four lots, uh, the combined disturbance was over the, the threshold of a half or an acre, or whatever the threshold is. So we had to apply for a land disturbance permit for the entire, for the entire four, but then we only took title to two and posted bonds accordingly. Uh, so there's, there's two others that are, that are still out there that, that would be subject to it.
Okay, is there still a bond on that, or...
No, there's no proposed work on those yet.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this, we posted the bond prior to doing any work on these two lots, so...
So, I make a motion to release all the remaining bond on this 185 Mill Road.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Uh, 670, 67, 67 Baldwin Street, Grogan Field, town in North Andover. Application for land disturbance permit under section 250-10 of the town for the renovation, of the town bylaws, for the renovation to the baseball field. Hello?
Hello.
Could you please introduce yourselves and tell us what we're discussing today?
Jacob Murray from Waterfield Design Group, we're the engineer and landscape architect for the project, this is Tim Wong, the chief designer for the project. So, I don't know if you want to bring up the plans, does that be the best way to start off? Walk through it once you got those up.
Monica, just to go over the, um, plan for this is that we're going to hear, hear something about what's gonna, what's proposed, we'll, we're gonna have a discussion about it today, and it's gonna come back for a public hearing in a few weeks.
Exactly, on the 17th it's gonna officially open for the hearing, notices have gone out, but they asked for a discussion just to get to the ball rolling.
Okay. All right, and there's the potential that we may try to, you know, depending on what we hear today, what we discuss today, uh, to vote on it, on the 17th, depending on if everything we're interested in is satisfied. Okay, glad...
Monica, if we had the, there was a color plan, uh, graphical in there, it would have been...
It's not this...
It was a file I sent on Friday.
If not, I can work from this, this is fine, don't, you head up.
Oh.
So, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay, I do send them Friday. Apologize, I'll try and bring it up while you discuss it.
Okay, so if you go down to the existing, the one sheet here at least, so, it's the existing Grogans Field, this was used as trailer storage with a gravel road being an emergency built on top of it during the Columbia gas explosion. And so because of that, the field, uh, has been highly disturbed and is no longer usable for, for sports and for baseball playing. And so this project is to renovate it and update that field. As you can see, the shaded area there is the, uh, area where the gravel roads were created on the field, the dashed line that you see going through the outfield is where, is the approximate area of the, uh, where the grass and the lawn was disturbed in the, on the property. And so, it is a four-acre site, about three acres of the parcel has been disturbed, and we're just gonna work in those three acres, the rest that has not been disturbed, uh, is going to remain as it is, and I know that there's also a upcoming, as you can see in the, in the right-hand corner, at least my right-hand corner, uh, you can see there's a playground, that is not being modified as part of this project, but the town has an upcoming project where they're looking to, to enhance that area as well. But that'll be done under a different filing and scope. So Monica, if you want to just go up from this one, all right, so here's the color rendering of the proposed field, so the light green is the area where it is proposing to be redone, uh, and then the dark green is basically the limit where it's, uh, existing, the existing lawn can remain because it wasn't disturbed during the trailers. So the major upgrades here, basically, we're really putting the field back into place with the exception of, we are repaving the parking area that's already previously paved, we're adding accessible routes for, to the dugouts and then also to the seating for, uh, for handicap and other, uh, accessible needs, uh, who are coming to watch the game. Because of that, there is a slight increase in the impervious area, and we're proposing to collect that with an area drain that'll send that to infiltration chambers, uh, under the left field, outfield. Along with that, we're also upgrading the infield and putting in an underdrain system, the town has found that, uh, due to the tight soils on the site, that the clay material in the infield in particular was getting saturated and wasn't drying out, uh, along with the rest of the field, and so we're putting an underdrain system in to help whisk that water away, uh, and infiltrate it into the ground, as opposed to ponding on the clay area. Other than that, it's a natural turf field, uh, there'll be new fencing and replacing a, a storage shed with a new storage shed, um, and then, and that's really the, the extent of the project. There are also shelters that are proposed over the dugout areas currently, they're just open seating, and this is to protect the players, uh, from the elements, uh, in the sun during the games.
When you say natural turf field, what does that mean?
That means, I mean, I mean, it's not synthetic, it means it's grass, it's, uh, it's what we normally called a turf field, but now we have to differentiate, so it's a natural turf field as opposed to a fake turf field, so...
All right, it's grass?
Yes, grass.
And dirt?
Just grass and dirt.
Okay, grass and dirt.
Grass and dirt.
That's, that's, all right. How long will this project take?
The, the hope is to have it done in the fall, so it's ready to play in the spring.
What's gonna be stored in the shed?
I'm sorry?
What's gonna be stored in the shed?
A typical maintenance and, uh, uh, sports equipment, just sports equipment, really, right?
Yeah, it's really the baseball stuff.
So lime, um, the bases, uh, other stuff like that.
Who would be doing the, um, is it, will this be done by TPW?
The construction?
Yeah.
No, there's like the contractor.
The contractor, okay. Plans for parking contract, you know, vehicles and things like that during the construction?
It would be dur, it would be in the, um, in the temporary, in the parking areas, so in those parking spots, that's where they'd store all the stuff during construction, and then the last thing they do will be to pave that existing parking area.
So, pretty flat, right? This is a playing field, so...
It is pretty flat.
Yeah, so, there's not, are you gonna put hay bales or anything up during, or...
We have silt stacks proposed, uh, if you want to go down, I don't think there's much proposed for hay bales, just because it's not...
Yeah, there's a hay bale line on the downhill side.
Okay, yeah.
Of the playing fields in town, it's, this is kind of less flat, it's about 2%, so, just in case for that. There'll be silt stacks, uh, there's a, uh, storm drain at the, at the downhill side of the property, and there'll be silt stacks, et cetera, in all, in all the catch bases.
Will you have any, um, I guess, what, what would be the, the net in terms of fill, are you taking off or bringing any material?
Really maybe a slight net increase, I think, there's not a whole lot of change in grades with the project.
Right. Any lighting?
No lighting, yeah, forgot to mention that, but then, no light, no light exists, no more lighting is proposed.
Is there anything controversial about this?
In some ways that's for the public to decide, I guess, but, uh, not, not from our, from our standpoint, um, I don't see that.
Okay, so, is there anyone here that, that wants to have a comment or a question? We'll have the full public hearing, um, on the 17th, but if there's anybody has questions, no, okay.
The 17th should have the stormwater review, which is being conducted by DPW, um, and the, uh, department review in general has been, um, has been started as well.
Okay, and so, um, can maybe get a draft decision and maybe send that to me, or send that, or, yeah, maybe just post that with any comments a few days before the meeting, so we can look at that? Okay, all right, anybody else, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, anything else you want to add?
Uh, just one thing to highlight is actually there will be ball netting, that'll be going up, uh, going higher than the existing, but that, I, I think will be, uh, an advantage to the neighbors to keep all those, all the field of play in the field of play.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, 75 Coachman's Lane, Amanda and Thomas Lowe, an application for a watershed special permit under Part 5 Watershed Protection District and Section 195 10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. Project involves the removal of a deck and a patio and a construction of a new screened porch, deck and patio within the non-discharge buff, discharge buffer zone, project is located within the R1 zoning district. Hello?
Hi, good evening, uh, Justin White with Bayberry and Company, representing my clients Tom and Amanda Lowe. Um, we were the designers for the project. So I, did you guys have any questions? We received a draft decision.
Yeah.
And there were a few points that we'd like to talk through, if we had the ability to.
Yep, hold on, so let me, um, let me go to Monica first.
Okay.
Tell us where we're at, and then happy to go through that with you. Okay.
Okay, at the last meeting, actually, all the review was completed, um, there was nothing outs, outstanding on, on this, so, um, it was pretty cut and, you know, pretty, pretty cut and dry that all the, any, there weren't any outstanding issues once, once we reached the meeting.
Have you had any conversations with the applicant?
They have, they have commented in regards to some of the conditions in the plan that they wanted to address, um, one was related to the bond, uh, the other was, um, gee...
Twenty-six.
Thank you, was, uh, condition, uh, number 26, which was the, uh, letter from the architect or engineer.
Okay, so you made changes to that?
Uh, yes, you should see redline versions.
Yeah.
In the draft decision in front of you.
Okay, so have you seen the redline version?
I don't, don't believe so.
So, the redline version takes out number 26, the whole paragraph, and just says, yeah, and then replaces it with the applicant must submit a letter from the...
Great.
Architect and/or engineer of the project stating that the building landscaping and site layout substantially comply with the plans.
Great.
Okay, and what was the other issue, the one you wanted to discuss, the bond?
Uh, yeah, my client was, was hoping that the, the item of the, uh...
What number is it?
Charity could be either looked at, because it's a very straightforward, very small project.
Yeah.
Uh, and they were hoping that could be thought through a little bit.
Okay, so...
I did speak with the applicant today about the bond, I said, you know, this is the avenue to, to discuss the bond amount, but I explained the purpose of the bond was to ensure that the work was done in compliance with whatever plan you, you approve.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anyone that has any comments, questions about this? Gee, anybody want anything they want to add to the public hearing before we close the public hearing, and then we can go through the draft? Nothing? Get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on 75 Coachman's Lane, the watershed special permit for 75 Coachman's Lane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, public hearing is now closed, we're gonna review the draft decision. So, just everyone's recollection, this was their, taking out the deck that's there, putting back one within the same footprint, it's got the pylons.
Yeah, kilo piles.
Believe they can either have the same or less, um, impervious surface.
We've actually, we've actually reduced the impervious surface significantly on, on the property.
I think you ought to put that into finding effect, a little bit more explicit, I mean implicitly it's there, but, but just say it's, it's a net decrease in impervious area.
Okay, so can I alter condition number eight, which discusses the removal of the existing deck, um, the number of square foot, and just say explicitly the amount of...
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, let's make that explicit, but, yeah.
How long is this project gonna take again?
We suspect, anticipate the projects, uh, well, part of it's we've been seeing some delays here, or so, I think we had made mention in, in the correspondence, we need to, once we know exactly when we're getting our full approvals, uh, I think we'll have a better ability to, to identify that, because obviously, being a later season project. But we suspect, uh, if we were to get a decision rendered today, um, which was another point I wanted to talk about, was the pre-construction meeting, if we were to have to wait another 20 days, um, that kind of really starts to jeopardize our ability to, to start and complete this project before winter, which was, I think would be in everybody's interest if there's consideration from a stormwater and sedimentation, you know, basically general site disruption. So we're trying to expedite, because this project was slated to start in June and be done this year, so, so if there's anything we can do to move that along, I think...
Pre-construction meeting must be held...
After the 20-day reprieve period?
It doesn't say that.
Doesn't have to be.
No, no, it just says it has to be prior to the issuance of a building permit before you start building, so...
So if we're able to expedite that, that helps, obviously, everything, it's pretty straightforward.
Right, the applicant can apply for building permits during that time, I can do the pre-construction meeting, however, I can't sign off until the building perm, I mean, as written, I can't sign off until the building permit until the 20-day...
Yeah, for 20 days, yeah, but you can do the preliminary work in advance.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Anyway, my point was that $2,000, it doesn't seem like a heavy lift for like three weeks' worth of work. Seems reasonable.
I mean, I think it's our norm, we're, um, I'm inclined to keep it.
There's been other small additions, um, that you've approved that had approximately that amount, so...
Yeah, so it's consistent with our practice, we're not unfairly signaling out this applicant compared to others.
And it is something that is returned once the project is completed.
I don't have time with the 26th amendment, so, good. Any other comments, changes?
Just that, I think the change to 26 saves money that wouldn't otherwise be spent.
Very much.
Whereas the bond is, as has been noted, is given back in its standard practice, so, I think we've exercised what we can do to save the owner money.
Very good. Okay, uh, can we get a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended, uh, the, uh, special permit, 75 Coachman's Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, 701 Salem Street, 701 Salem Street Realty Trust. Turny Vaughn, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, Monica, where do we stand with 701 Salem Street?
Okay, so at the last meeting, um, the applicant talked about, um, screening, um, there was concern about, uh, potential, um, intrusion of headlights. The applicant did speak with some of the applicants, and I think one accepted, um, some arborvitae planted on their, on their, um, property, um, and speaking with the applicant, um, several others didn't, did not, so they would like to go ahead and erect a fence on Salem Street, um...
That fence was part of the last plan set, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
So it would be in the same place.
For me, that's something we absolutely have to have, is a fence there. That, that whole, you know, you look today, it's a mess, where the parking is up against the edge, and cleaning that up, I think, is really important.
Okay.
Okay.
So we had that at the last, is there anything new since the last date? Other than we have a draft decision now to go through?
No, no.
Okay, does anybody have questions or comments? I mean, I think we've been pretty well through this one, uh, is there anything else that anybody wants to ask, or do you want to just go through the decision?
If, um, the, the one issue we, we would just like to point out and, and request is, there was, I think it's condition number 27, was with respect to deliveries.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The, you know, the, the discussion, um, at the prior hearing, we mentioned that we did have, currently Dunkin' Donuts and newspaper deliveries which came earlier. I think the board suggested to have Monica go back and look at the market basket decision, which she did, and she used consistent language, um, which we don't have a problem with in general, we would just like to include an exception for the existing Dunkin' Donuts and the newspaper deliveries, um, or such other vendors as may be approved by the Board of Health in, in the future.
Okay. We'll get to...
The Board of Health?
I'm not sure.
They report essentially noise complaints related to deliveries and garbage trucks and things related to that, so I think that's why, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, okay, so...
That's new to me.
Exception of individual vendors approved by the Board of Health, um, and with exception of current, um, Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts and its newspaper deliveries.
Okay, um, all right, so, if they're members of the public that want to say things, I'll invite you up now, I, we have a really packed agenda, so I'd really like if it's to be something new, not something that we've already heard and considered.
Ladies and gentlemen, James Clear, 700 Salem Street. Our main concern here is not the expansion or the Dunkin' Donuts or the sub shop, it's the restaurant and bar keeping open till midnight and so forth and so on. And the exact size of this building, according to the, uh, what do you call it, the proposal, is supposed to fit in with our neighborhood at a square foot footprint of 12,600 feet and a total of 13,550 feet. It doesn't take a rocket science to come up to the fact that this thing really does not fit in our single-family residential neighborhood. Now, there's that, okay? Next, um, I did a little research, I got every restaurant in North Andover. You know, one is in a single-family residential neighborhood, okay? Take one and pass it back. So what I did here is this, every restaurant in town has a license and, uh, this is actually...
Copy for the record? Thank you.
And has its appropriate zoning, right? Again, not one is in a residential neighborhood, with the exception of Rolfs and the 99, they back up to one. And again, one's in downtown and the other's on 135, which is extremely busy street. Okay? Also, I have a study here, done by some folks in New York, who tallies up, um, the amount of pedestrian and vehicle accidents that attributed to local establishments serving alcohol. Sorry, I want to have a seat. All right, so this is a 47% increase in, um, what do you call it, vehicular, pedestrian incidents when a bar is introduced into a neighborhood. Okay? Now, that's a pretty technical report, it goes into a lot of the chemistry of getting drunk and all, but the synopsis is on the front page, you know?
How long have you lived in the neighborhood?
Does it matter?
Well, I'm just curious, have you lived there before the original town was built or...
No, I live right across, I've been there for three and a half, almost four years.
Okay.
I frequent the place, you know, I, I find it convenient, you know, I'm there, I use the dry cleaner, and then occasionally I'll get a six-pack of beer. You know, uh, this whole thing, at this scale, is no longer a neighborhood convenience, this is gonna be an outside draw, in our quiet neighborhood, I don't know if any of you have been there at, say, 8:30 on a Friday or Saturday night, the place is a veritable ghost town. And this is gonna change the tenor of our neighborhood completely. Now, like I said, I have no problem with the guy making a buck, but he's making it on, you know, the backs of our property values, our, you know, way of life, you know, and this, this just doesn't fit in this neighborhood.
Thank you, Danielle?
Well, I wanted to go over the fence, you know, but you guys said you're gonna put it up there.
You don't, don't want the fence, or do you want...
No, I want the fence.
Okay.
Whenever something goes in there, I'd like to see the fence. But also, um, there, there's a big old oak tree that's actually on town property, you know, because it's almost 12 feet between the, the white line and the property line, I'd like to see that big oak tree stay there too, whenever this thing gets done.
If it's on town property, I mean, it would seem to be up to the town.
Yeah. Okay, and this is one thing I just wanted to show you before I go. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, last summer, I went around every house within a 76-house radius around this restaurant, were proposed. Every red X represents someone who does not want this, there are only three, well, actually there is a fourth one, but I didn't have that guy's address, who was in favor of this. So, that's nine out of 10 of the houses surveyed in this neighborhood do not want this. I mean, it can't be any more compelling than that.
But you understand that it's not just up to the people in the neighborhood, we, we're...
No, but we're the ones impacted by it the most.
I understand that, but that's not the criteria for which, i- it's not just about your neighborhood.
I understand that.
It's about their property rights, it's about the value to the entire community in town, um, and if there are going to be impacts on the neighborhood, and I think that there will be some, I, I don't...
Some?
Yes, so, I'm trying to be respectful, so I would appreciate the same, so I think that there will be some, um, but I do think that they have been over, I think that you're overstating them. And that's why, but that's why we're talking about things, about the, the fencing and the noise and other ways to mitigate, just like we do every other project that either impacts residences or commercial business or anything, um, that, that there is some spillover from the site of how it affects people, and we're trying to minimize that, but I, I don't really, me personally don't put much stake in a survey of people around, certainly not scientific, but, um...
Extremely scientific, I knocked on 70, well, 50-some-odd doors.
Okay, right.
But I mean, I, I think to put this a little bit in, uh, context, is that this proposal is for a property that is currently so in general business, so there's no zoning change involved, this is the existing zoning property, um, this is compliant with all zoning, uh, it's consistent with that, um, and also, under site plan review, we have, this is not a use that's subject to special permit at site plan review, so the, uh, we, our flexibility is only to deal with, not to use, but the, the relative size, the impact and so forth, and if you see what we've done, we've tried to take as many mitigating steps as we possibly could, given the circumstances. we've tried to take as many mitigating steps as we possibly could, given the circumstances. We've got the individual to decrease the height of the building and some of the other impacts. And the last point is the use of restaurant where, with a liquor license is a decision made by the Board of Selectmen and not by the planning board. We can approve a restaurant, but we have no rights to, to approve or deny liquor licenses, that's just not within our jurisdiction.
No, they'd have to apply for the.
So there'll be more public hearings and?
However the liquor license process works, I'm not, I believe so, but I'm not an expert in that, but I believe it is. They have to, the hours and all of that would be set by the Board of Selectmen and the granting or not granting of a liquor license is up to them. Okay. So like, so there's a difference between a, a package store license, you know, license to sell beer and wine versus a restaurant license, under different sections of the law. And so I believe that there's a public hearing, but again, that's, as John said, that's.
Yeah, I think it's the licensing board, they do have a public hearing.
Right.
It's noticed, but the, the point that's big is we have new jurisdiction for whether liquor is served much, just not within our scope. And by what I think we've tried to do, and I think we're, as, as Etev said, we're mindful of the impact, but as we try to do as many mitigating steps as, as possible, but this is a use that's allowed by right, it's within compliance with zoning, so we can't just say we don't like it. Unfortunately, it's just a little house.
What about the rest of us who have to live with it?
We are going to decide it based on the evidence that we've heard, okay? Any other points you want to make?
Pardon me?
Anything else to add?
No, that was it.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else, do you, do you guys have any comments or, yeah, someone else in the back?
I'm kind of locked in, but.
Okay, I, no, I need, but I, it's recorded, so I, take your time. Find your way.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm at 700 Salem Street, I'm representing my mother at the moment, she cannot be here.
Okay, what's your name?
Carol Basalti. My mother is Elizabeth Laterno.
Okay.
She lives at 700 Salem Street, which is right now directly across. I'm a little bit confused, because if the house, the residential house at 695 is going to be included in this project for 701, it's still residential, has that been changed to general business?
It's own general business.
No, that house is.
The house at 695 is general business?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When was that changed?
It wasn't.
A long time ago.
How long?
It's got to be a little standing.
It was longer than that, you know, the record is to.
I don't even remember, but it was a long time ago.
Because I talked to one of the previous owners who lived there before the last gentleman, he was a Greek person, I can't pronounce his name, who lived there before. It was never general business, it was always residential.
Yeah, it is, I'm sorry, it is own general business and it's been for a long time. I mean, that's just the fact of the circumstance, the situation, it just is.
Okay.
It's been on the zoning map, it's shown up that way, you know, for, for at least ten years, I mean, probably longer.
All right. My only other concern is the traffic on that street from that plaza. It's right now hard, no matter what time I go in and out of her driveway, which is used as a turnaround for many vehicles. It's crazy and it's dangerous and she's elderly.
So we did have, we have talked about the traffic, the information that we have seems like the way that the new spaces will be lined up should.
It looks like the opening is going to be directly across in between the both houses, which is directly across from her house.
Right, so it, the, based on the information that we provided, at least, it seems to me that the traffic flow in the, in the parking lot should be better, which should hopefully improve traffic flow in general.
Should be better, but on the weekends, it's not, it's crazy, it's like a drag race over there.
Right, and I understand that that's the way it is currently, and we had police officers here to help talk about that and talk about what they could do.
Oh, I see them there all the time, but nothing's being done.
Okay, again, so we're looking at the site plan and what, what's been proposed on the site plan, and that's what we're working off of, so. Anything else that you want to ask or comment?
Other than it's, it's going to be extremely like a sore thumb in the neighborhood, it's a residential neighborhood, lot of new families, a lot of young children. I lived there all my life, it's a very family-oriented neighborhood. And this, this, yes, it's a business and yes, everybody's guaranteed that, you know, they should have their own say, but this business has, it's, doesn't belong in the neighborhood.
But the business has been in the neighborhood.
It's a convenience to have the convenience store for, to run in if you need milk, you want coffee, Dunkin' Donuts, there's, you know, a salon there to have your hair done, a dry cleaner to get your clothes done, but to have such an enormous restaurant there that's gonna, I'm assuming will have a liquor license, on the weekends, it's going to be crazy, at night, I mean, people around there work early, so they go to bed early.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, anything you guys want to add?
No, I mean, I think that we've had a number of hearings and we understand the, the neighbors' concerns. We stand by our opinion that it actually is improving traffic circulation and improving safety with the, the, the new driveway access and in particular, I think, moving the driveway away from Abbott Street and having the two drives so close together is part of what creates a hazardous condition presently, and that will be improved as well as site circulation, as you mentioned.
How long has the business been there? I know we talked about it, but, or it was mentioned at one point, I just don't remember.
Well.
Our, our business has been there for 21 years. There was a business there prior that was similar to ours, just on a smaller scale, and it was a gas station and service station prior to that.
Okay.
Going back approximately 50 years.
Thank you. Okay, um, all right, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
All right. So I think, just, just on, on the, the last point, I think that's, for at least for me, that's an important finding of fact that this has been a business or has been as this business for at least 20 years and as a business for more, I mean, really, probably isn't even necessary because it, as John said, it is general business, but I, I took that as an important fact, that this has been an ongoing, continuous business in this area. I, I, I know, I, we've heard that it, the complaint that it doesn't fit in, but it's, it has been there for a lot longer than a lot of the houses in the area where it's fit in for at least the last 20 years, so.
Would you like me to add the, that's benefited business use and then the date of their previous, was it a site plan review from the nine, I think it was from 1990, thank you, 1998?
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, without any comment, just, just the fact, just that fact, that's it, that it's been a, for at least over 20 years, it's been in business and that it had a previous site plan review and find the 1998 date. Yeah, we're not taking any more.
695 was not in business for over 20 years.
Okay, okay, again.
Yes, it was, it was a gas station, but that was long closed and the neighborhoods around it were not there.
All right, so I'm keeping it, the finding of fact as is, okay.
Well, I think if we're going to have a finding of fact, we should specify that, that it is 701 that has been a place of business for over 20 years rather than the property because 695 has not been a business. So just to be specific to the facts.
Okay, 700 Salem Street has been a business use for over 20 years and I'll mention the previous site plan review and the date.
And that both, both are zoned general business, right?
Okay.
Do we already have that here?
I didn't see it, so I think.
So I think that's a very important finding of fact that both are zoned general business, both parcels, 701 and 695, that under the current zoning allow this use. Allow this use.
Mentional requirements.
Conforming to dimensional and allow this use by right.
Yeah. Do you have the dates for the memos for number 15?
I do, yes, I saw, I didn't add that, I apologize, I do have DPW's memo for that. I will insert the date.
Says the applicant will work with individual landowners located at 710 Salem Street, 740 Salem Street, and 20 Abbott Street to provide off-site screening in a reasonable manner to shield the butters from headlight glare. If the butters do not agree to off-site screening, an opaque fence will be erected. So we have that not everyone's agreed, right?
Exactly.
So then I think we should modify that somehow and could use some help with kind of the language to require the fence, and I think, I think from our perspective, we probably want it either way, even if everybody had agreed, I think the fence is still a good idea.
Excellent. I can, I can strike the language if you like, if the butters do not agree to off-site screening, I'll strike that and then just add the, the remainder of the sentence.
So an opaque fence will be erected on Salem Street in accordance with the approved plan? If that makes sense?
And in terms of the improvements to the traffic circulation, the parking, the concerns that have been noted, I know we often talk about having a reassessment in six months or 12 months.
Yeah, I mean, 26 addresses that, but I think it's got to be made a little bit more punch into it, is that, first of all, I think we should do it more than once.
Right.
I think we should do it at annual interval for at least the first three years.
Yes.
But I think it's, it's, it's got to be more robust, it's, it's, you know, and, and also that we can make further changes as required if it doesn't meet the requirements of bylaws, so.
And I think this is important, because even though it's by right, in property that is zoned, the questions that have been raised is what is the impact? And so this 26, I think, allows us to respect the by right use, but at the same time, be responsive to the concerns of the neighborhood by reevaluating yearly for three years with the option to take action.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you said it well, in my mind, it's the most important condition and decision.
Yes.
That it's that balance between the, the use, the right and, and how they actually do it, yeah.
Now, I know it's not really within our purview, because it's not in the site, but we heard comments from the, the butters and neighbors that the current condition is parking off-site on neighboring streets and such, and I, I think it's appropriate to put that in there, granted, you know, in the review period, we, it's not something, we can notice it, it's not something we can really do anything about, but at least it keeps it top of mind.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right that at one level, it's outside of our scope, but at another level, at a minimum, we should send a letter to the Police Department Board of Selectmen saying that we expect the off-site traffic condition to be improved and we'd ask that, that be included in the annual review, even though we don't have any jurisdiction over it, I mean, because of people are double parking, parking in driveways, parking on people's lawns, I mean, we, we just got to put an end to that, we can't have that continue.
So let's talk about some specific language that we like, so. So do you want it to be something the applicant provides us or something that is done in conjunction with the planning department?
Well, I think what I just heard was something the applicant provides to the planning board and the police department is requested to also provide this information on a yearly basis, so it's both.
Okay.
It's a request to the police department, but that should be in the form of a letter from the board to the police department noting the concerns that have already been cited and that the planning board will review annually for the next three years and we're requesting police department input on these parking issues.
So, so, okay, so it's not really applicant providing a review, it's that the planning board will review, so.
Yes.
Basically, a year, a year from when it's constructed, I mean, I think that's, or when from building permits are issued, I mean, we don't want to do it a year from now because it might not be built and that doesn't give us.
No, it's probably, I could say within a year of occupancy.
Okay. So within a year of occupancy, the planning board, the planning board will review litter, lighting, and traffic.
So are you looking for photographs of the site a year after, starting a year after occupancy to show the conditions? Do you want those at certain times of the day? What do you?
Well, I think as we get closer to that year, we can kind of, we can kind of work offline with what we want, I mean, really, I want, I want to know that the photometric plan that was provided is actually being followed, and I want to know that, you know, traffic is flowing properly through, through the site, that cars are parking where they're supposed to be parking, and we'll get to the signage about that, because I think we wanted some signage, that the fence is actually blocking the glare.
And is maintained.
Right, and is maintained, so how we actually get those information, I don't think, I don't want to put how we're going to get the answers in the decision, more that we're going to review those questions. And then we'll have to work on how we get the answers.
Are we going to do it at least three times?
Because typically, you would include some of that language, so for instance, you had another project, a gas station, where you indicated that you wanted the leaves to be down, you wanted photographs provided so you could see how well the screening was performing, so.
Well, I think your 25 is fine, in addition to it, I think 26 is broader because it deals with the general use conditions, I mean, I think that there, it's like, is the traffic problem reduced, is the noise problem reduced, is the litter problem reduced? And the idea is we review it and if there's still a problem, we'd ask the applicant to fix it, I mean, I think that's, at a minimum, as Peter said, what we owe the people that live in the neighborhood.
Plus, we're requesting a report from the police department and they could choose, for example, to give us a summation of how many complaints of parking or complaints of litter or whatever that would amplify what we hear from the applicant. And it also gives a chance for the public to be here and say whether or not they agree with what the applicant is reporting.
What's the recourse, though, on our, what control do we have to fix it?
The only recourse is if it's a disaster, and again, I'm, I'm, I want to put this in context, because you could make an argument that they, it's no, they're not in compliance with the special permit, that would be the ultimate finding, that, that's frankly, a little bit of a stretch, but you technically, if it was egregious, the violations, in clear violation of the condition of the special permit, you could revoke the special permit.
Or modify it. I believe the board has the power to modify, we rarely do modify on our own, usually it's at the request of someone, but I believe the board actually has the power to modify a special permit on its own, through another, through a hearing. Okay, but I still, I still think for the language, is, is the, are we putting the onus on the board to do these things and review it, or are we putting it on the applicant to provide his information?
Well, I think it is a combination of both, I think, you know, I view it as that, you know, planning staff would, would prepare in the same way we do for a regular hearing, and then we would ask the applicant to come in, have a conversation about it, review what comes from the police department and, you know, and listen to what the public has to say.
So that's, I agree with that, so that, that's the language I want to get. So within one year of the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, within one year.
Within one year of the certificate of occupancy?
And then we'll cycles for another two years, yeah.
And two years annually thereafter, the planning board will review litter, lighting.
Could be something like the planning board will review and the applicant will confirm with evidence or, or something of that nature.
Cooperate with the review?
Yeah.
Providing information for the review?
Yes, provide information for the review.
Okay.
Including information from the North Andover Police Department.
I think we need to word that in a separate sentence to say, in addition, the planning board will send a letter requesting the police department provide a record of. conditions coincident with this review. And that, my understanding is that'll be a separate letter from the board to the police department.
Right. And so what we'll need to do, Monica, is somehow put it in view permit that, you know, schedule it for when they get us to different occupancy in any of the buildings, nine months thereafter, it comes to you and to us to start that process.
Okay.
Obviously, if there are complaints, that will trigger it as well, but, okay.
So if we're done that, I have one other point I want to raise.
I do too. So go ahead, why don't you do yours?
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're gonna send a letter to the police department. I thought this was a helpful discussion. I think it's trying to strike a balance. I feel less strongly about this, but a question has been raised about a potential public health impact of a liquor license in this location. Now, we don't have jurisdiction, this is not our issue, but the study clearly says, in the very first line, can be a public health issue. So would the board consider a similar letter to the Alcohol Licensing Commission, simply to say that during this hearing, a question was raised about whether or not there was a public health issue associated with a liquor license at this location, as outlined in the study that was provided? Please find the study attached. Over to you. It's not our jurisdiction, but we've heard a concern about a public health issue. So does this make sense for this board to send a similar letter to the Alcohol Licensing Commission? And maybe not, but...
Our Town Licensing Commission?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, I'm happy to provide the study to, to the chair, but I don't think it should be part of any decision. I think it's way outside of site plan review, but I'm, but I'm happy to provide it and they can discuss it while...
It's their issue, but I just feel like, is there some way that having heard potential public safety issue, we're not just letting it drop, we're passing it off? And maybe it's just providing the study.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to provide it to the chair of the licensing board.
Yeah. I'd be happy with that.
Okay. Okay. I want to add special condition of the signage. There, there was talk about signage about where large landscape vehicles could park or larger vehicles could park. So if we could just add that signage will be provided.
And designated spaces?
Well, I don't care where on the property it is, as long as there's something that points to this is, these are locations for larger vehicles so that someone going there sees, oh yeah, I should park here. You know, I think that's just helpful. And I know the applicant said that they would do that and I appreciated that. And I think that's a, it, it can't hurt, right? Will it necessarily clear up where they're gonna park? No, because you can't have, you know, you can't necessarily control every single vehicle, but it'll help.
So after condition number six, I'll add that as a condition, kind of bump everything, slide everything down and say that there'll be signage specific to large vehicle, I'm losing my train of thought, sorry, parking.
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, there's a, on the site plan, there's a construction detail that does indicate what that signage would look like.
Yeah, I saw that in the high one.
Given the concern of butters and residents in the neighborhood about people parking outside the, outside the confines of the property, should we have something in the, during construction section that just specifically notes where construction vehicles are to be parking while they are building the facility?
Is it in the plan? I know where construction vehicles were gonna park.
Oh. So I'm just pulling up the plan so we can see where that's located. I'm not mistaken, stockpiling locations, things of that nature was on there, but not necessarily construction?
Because we're not getting off on a good foot if the construction vehicles park
Yeah.
across the street on Abbott or on Keys or...
There should be enough room to park on the property, I would assume.
Yeah, I don't think it's designated on the plan, but there should be plenty of room to park.
Park on the property?
Park on the property.
Yeah, okay.
I can add language that says construction vehicle parking will be banned from Salem and Abbott Street.
Would you say parking on the property only?
Okay.
Should be on site, yeah.
Keep it simple, okay.
I mean, it's gonna be big enough that there should be plenty parked outside.
Would you say six eighty-seven Salem Street be included in case there needs to be parking because on site?
Is that your property?
It's my home.
Sure. Park whatever you like at your house. On the property, so six ninety-five, seven oh one, and six eighty-seven Salem Street. That's fine.
I'm good on the, yeah.
I am good as well.
Yep.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review special permit as amended for seven oh one Salem Street.
Six ninety-five and seven oh one Salem Street. And it's also a reduction in parking special per, should we vote on those separately? Are those separate special permits or are they together?
You can do them together, just explicitly set them there for both.
So it's a site plan review and reduction in parking special permit for six ninety-five and seven oh one Salem Street?
That's exactly what I meant.
Okay. As amended, okay. Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? No, approved. Thank you.
Just, just for record, can, a point of clarification. You, the section twenty-seven condition?
Yes.
Not seeing what you've written.
Amended, yeah, so amended.
I know, you made a proposal prior and that vote included the proposal that you made prior to closing.
Yes, deliveries to the site must be limited to between the hours of seven AM and nine PM with the exception of individual, individual vendors approved by the Board of Health and with the exception of current Dunkin' Donuts and newspaper deliveries.
Okay. Thank you.
Next. Four High, Four High Street, RCG West, uh, West Mill, M A L L C, application for definitive subdivision approval. Actually, before we get to that, let's do Four High Street Avalon Bay Communities, application for Sub District A definitive master plan special permit. Avalon has requested that that hearing be continued to September seventeenth. Can we get a motion to continue the Four High Street Avalon Bay Communities definitive master plan special permit until September seventeenth?
Second take?
All in favor? Aye, okay. Four High Street Avalon is continued until September seventeenth. So with that being said, we're just discussing subdivision today, okay? So let's just keep our subdivision hats on. Four High Street, RCG West Mill, M A L L C, application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with Master and Law Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one O, eighty-one T, and eighty-one U, and North Andover Code Section two fifty-five dash five point five to subdivide map fifty-four lot one and map fifty-three lot twenty-five into three lots and to create a new subdivision road. The proposed subdivision is located with a downtown overlay District A Historic Mill area with underlying ISR four and general business zoning districts. We also have application for definitive subdivision approval with Master and Law Chapter forty-one, Section one eighty-one O, eighty-one T, and eighty-one U to subdivide map fifty-four, fifty-three lots one and twenty-five into three lots in the downtown overlay District A Historic Mill, underlying IS and R four zoning districts. Okay. Hi.
Hi. I'm David Steinberg from RCG LLC. We're the applicant on the subdivision plan. This is a plan consistent with the West Mill master plan, which was to develop the existing mill buildings, which are south of the proposed subdivision road, and then two lots would be north of the proposed subdivision road.
Can you speak up, please? Folks are having a hard time hearing you in the back. Thank you.
Sorry. The, the subdivision plan encompasses three lots, which are divided by a subdivision road. That subdivision road currently follows pretty closely the path of an easement through the property that connects to Sutton Pond condominiums. So to the south of that road would be the historic mill buildings of West Mill that have been largely redeveloped, and to the north of that road would be two lots that are targeted for development. That is associated with the Avalon Bay special permit that, that was continued tonight, but we want to move ahead with the subdivision plan. The road we're proposing in that plan would be consistent with whatever lot two would be allowed on lot two and lot three. As Avalon, we know, is, is reviewing their plans and looking forward to resubmitting. It would be nothing that would affect the road we are proposing to...
Sorry, so are we going forward with, do we still have the same subdivision plan that we had before?
Yes.
Okay. Without knowing what's gonna be on there, is that...
Well, I think, you know, there's, there's been a proposal and essentially a master plan presented on what would be on lots two and three. And so this is, this is continuing forward with the subdivision road with the assumption that something like that would be, move ahead on lots two and lot three.
What if it doesn't? I mean, I'm just, I guess we can go.
I, I mean, you could look at it both ways.
Both approaches, I think, have some merit is, because you can, you have a legal right to create a subdivision anytime you want.
Sure, but if you're not, are we asking for waivers?
Well, I mean, well, and again, part of my concern with this project is, we have yet to see any kind of discussion of the subdivision road. I want to see subdivision discussion purely on the technical merits of the subdivision road, like with grade construction, what's it gonna be with, what's the length of the right of way, what's the drainage gonna be, how's it gonna end, where's it gonna end? I mean, I, I agree in a broader sense that you need to know what the use is gonna be on the lots because from a planning perspective, you may change the layout of the road based on the uses. But to this point, I haven't, we haven't seen anything on the subdivision yet.
And speaking with Avalon this afternoon, they plan on submitting a revised, a revised plan prior to the next meeting. That plan should include new building layouts, just basic information with no engineering. So again, they wanted to revamp their plan as, as, as requested. But again, that, that plan, I haven't seen a copy of it, just to be, just to be clear, but I was told that a basic plan with new building layouts will be presented so they could then get some feedback from you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have any set of drawings that actually show the subdivision in terms of all the things we normally look at in a subdivision? I, I don't know if that's here, but...
We pulled that up, it's from the prior meetings.
And if I could add to that again, I'm Brian Hunt with Time Bond, the civil engineer who put the, the subdivision drawings together and put the application together here before you. We, we heard you, Mr. Simons, clearly at the last meeting, and that's why we're here in front of you, that the Avalon Bay project clearly got direction and guidance on moving forward and input from both the community and from the board. We're looking to get input from the board as well. That what we have is, there's a complete subdivision plan set that was submitted along with the application, and we're looking to get your feedback on the design, the approach that we've taken, the way the road is constructed, those types of things. So if we do need to modify the approach, and there have been some discussions with the DPW on exactly where the road starts and stops as it relates to High Street, we want to get input from the board here as much as we can, so we're not starting over from scratch again, so we get some input on where to go next. So that's why we wanted to have this meeting with you tonight, to continue that discussion, to get some useful feedback on what we've provided so far and what comments the board has.
I think it's also worth adding, if we start to review the road on its technical merits, we'll see, it was designed with significant capacity to handle, you know, whether it's the two hundred and fifty residential units that were proposed or other types of uses that could be on those lots. I think if we can get the feedback on the design of the road, that'll not only give us guidance on how to design the road to comply with Avalon's potential future project or any future design of this road as we go forward with our master plan. I think it's important to start to review the road for those reasons.
Monica, is that in the seven-nine packet?
It, it is. I, my plan is corrupted right now, so I'm gonna try and download it again.
There's one in, uh, let's see what...
My seven-nine's not working either?
Yeah, it's seven-nine. I'm able to open it, definitive subdivision folder.
Okay. Well, do you want to, do you want to walk, do you want to see if we can get it open or do you want to tell us, I mean, what you're...
Try again.
Do we have a hard copy we can look at, old school, and put up to the desk?
Unfortunately, all I have is eleven by seventeens. I was counting on the submittal to be presented.
I'm sorry, the, an area was provided for this meeting. Here it is. We're, we're online again.
Okay.
Right.
The first thing in the seven-nine packet is definitive subdivision?
Yes. We're trying.
Okay, yeah. Download, download anyway, that's fine. Right, but if you, if you hit download now, it still won't do it?
Let's see if I can pull it up a different way.
Can you get it up?
I don't know if you want to start, well, you know, discussing it, while I fight with this.
So, actually, I'm sorry. How do you, where, how do you get up to that? Yeah, no, I want to put it up though. It says here to download.
Yeah.
Can you go to that screen?
Yep.
Okay, hit download, or hit, I'm sorry, hit that.
I know.
Where were you last time?
When I was on, I was in DC for...
Oh, that's right.
Last week I was in Bermuda, though.
No way, good for you.
I need to go get hard copies if this is gonna work out.
Vacation or work?
No, that's not it.
Preliminary plan? Can we use the preliminary plan?
No.
Why don't we see, were we able to get hard copies somewhere?
Yeah, I can grab hard copies.
Why don't we pause?
Join the session.
Why don't we, so we're gonna pause this one. Let's go to, let's get the hard copies so we can try to make some progress tonight. All right, so let's do Senior Center, one Surrey Drive, four seventy-seven Sutton Street, five oh five Sutton Street and zero Sutton Street, town in North Andover, application for special permits, site plan review, shared common driveway, parking on a separate lot, satellite parking under chapter one ninety-five, article eight, part three, section one ninety-five two point two, twenty-one, and section one eighty-five eight point eight D four B, to allow for the construction of a two-story thirteen thousand five hundred square foot GFA Senior Center with associated amenities, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, and other site improvements in the B two and R four zones, five oh five Sutton Street, Sutton Street redevelopment, application for special permits, site plan review, multifamily housing, common driveway, modification of landscaping requirements for off-street parking, reduction in parking and construction of a new building exceeding two thousand square feet under section one ninety-five four point eight oh, one ninety-five two point two, one ninety-five eight point eight, one ninety-five eight point one over the North Andover zoning bylaw, Mass. Town Law forty-eight, section nine, to allow for the construction of three multi-story buildings, associated parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, and other site improvements, B two zoning district. Hello?
Hello.
Good evening.
All right, so let's talk about Sutton Street. Why don't you tell us where we're at and what we'd like to do tonight?
I'm Jean Enright, interim community development director. So at the last meeting, you had received all the information, you felt that everything you needed was submitted. Since that last meeting, we've worked out all peer review comments for the senior center, so all department review and peer review has been satisfied. Couple items to be conditioned in the decision, but other than that, the plans reflect all the changes. The only change to the plans today that were submitted were to reflect some stormwater notes that were added to the plan. So there was no, no new information.
Right. And Eric Loth from Sutton Street Redevelopment, we really didn't bring a lot tonight, myself and Scott Cameron, who's our civil engineer, and we thought, for the most part, we're here to answer questions if needed. We did, just previously at six o'clock tonight, have a site walk with the zoning board, or the members of the zoning board, to walk through the jungle like you all did. And we have, our next meeting with them is next week, the tenth, so we're hoping to wrap up at that point, so I don't know if, you may be a little ahead of them.
Do you anticipate a vote on that there? I know, I can't speak for them, but...
I hope so. It seems like we've answered all the question, we don't have anything new to give them either.
Okay.
Well, the pictures, right?
The pictures we showed here last time have been submitted to them, so that would probably be the only thing to really discuss of note.
And I will add, the senior center project engineer, Jim Devellis, is here as well, if you have any technical questions. And the multifamily application has to go before Concom as well, and that hearing's scheduled to open first Wednesday in September, so, I'll be tomorrow.
Anything outstanding with peer review on the multifamily end?
Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group. We did receive late in the day on Thursday, just two small adjustments, there are signage striping comments from TEC. Otherwise, we've submitted responses to everything else, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any outstanding items. I do have that one adjustment to the plan, if the board would like a copy of that tonight, I can show you what that is. I can pass that out, or I can leave it with Monica.
We submitted electronically today, we do need the hard copies, but that was to reflect two changes TEC requested, a stop line, I remember coming out of the garage and...
Stop line and a pedestrian crosswalk sign at the connector between the two, the senior center to the multifamily, across the driveway.
All right. Any, do people have outstanding questions, comments?
I have two, and it goes back to the site walk primarily. I know we talked about it before the site walk, but I'm curious, now having been out there, can you refresh our memories as to the rationale behind having the three-story building out near Sutton Street and the four-story building back towards the property line of the abutters on Surrey?
Sure. Yeah, I think for a couple of reasons, but primarily when we looked at it from a planning perspective, we thought coming down, or coming onto Sutton Street, what you have across the street right now is the airport, which is controlled by Lawrence, as we know, we really don't have much control over it, and that's why we end up with self-storage and so forth backed up against us. And we thought, coming from the more commercial developments along, you know, one thirty-three, if you come on to Sutton Street, we thought we could set a nicer tone and kind of step down from the commercial. If we have a three-story building stepping down to the senior center, which is more a one-and-a-half slash two-story building, as opposed to, because the buildings are fairly close to the road, coming in and having a four-story kind of looming over you, we thought a three-story made sense, a lot more people are running by that every day. And this is kind of the front door to downtown North Andover in some ways, if you're coming from Hayville, from Bauxford, from that way. On the flip side, I know that pushes a four-story building to the back. When we did the site walk and also when we had some of those, the visuals produced, what we found is, most of the, most of the trees or most of the foliage of the trees is much higher up. So if you're looking, what most of the neighbors are gonna be seeing, what's really gonna be the problem until we do some more planting is there's the lower part of the building. From thirty feet up is, the building, the trees are mostly mature, but if you're standing out there in the woods, what you have is a stem going up twenty-five feet with no branches on it, and then you get this nice crown. So when you're looking up, say from the back, anything above, I don't know if it's twenty-five, thirty feet up, you're really not gonna see. So I know, it seems like it's gonna be a big building back there, but I don't think the height is really what people are gonna be seeing, it's more the first twenty feet is what we're concerned about, what we were gonna do, all the planting. We just thought from a planning perspective, from the whole townwide perspective, it made much more sense to have less massing along the street. We could've done, you know, the length of the building shorter and gone taller and avoided going to the zoning board, which would've made life a little bit easier, but we thought it made more sense to, we thought it was the right thing to do, I guess, from a lot of different planning perspectives. If that answers the question, but...
I have the exact same question. And I think I understand your reasoning, and I think from the way you're framing it, it makes a certain sense, but for me, the, the transition from commercial to, you know, residential apartment building is not as critical as the transition from resident, in existing residential neighborhood to that building. And I, I agree with you that a four-story building along Sutton Street is a lot of mass, but that's because it's a four-story building. That's a lot of mass, no matter where you put it. So at least to me, I, I think it's a great question, and I really, I really would like to hear more about why the height of building one and three could not be swapped, why we couldn't have the four-story in one and the three-story in the three, which I think would give a much better transition to the residential neighborhood.
I guess the easy answer is, they absolutely could be swapped, we just think it's the wrong thing to do. We think, we understand, you know, it's, we're gonna, and I think Mr. Simons put his finger on it on one of the earlier meetings, it's balancing affecting three or four people in the back versus affecting the rest of the town for the next fifty years. And I, I do honestly believe, once the rest of the trees grow up, you won't see the first twenty feet, but even right now, if you're standing out there, you know, all the tree cover is really from that thirty to forty-five feet up, because they're immature trees. So if you're looking up from the backyards, you're not gonna be able to tell there's a three or four-story building there, at least when the leaves are there. Yeah, in the, in the winter, you'll be able to. But we just thought, it made a lot more sense, and we did the same thing when we were at, when we permitted Berry Farms, there wasn't somebody right behind us, but we tried to put three-story buildings fronting the road and the four-story in back to kind of soften the look of it, keep, and hide the parking behind the buildings.
Well, in the case where there isn't residential right there, then that makes great sense to me.
It was an easier decision, you're right.
It makes great sense to me, and I also, I guess I would take a little different view. I don't think it's two or three or four people. I mean, those are the ones immediately abutting, but I think, you know, a two or three-story building, sort of the impact only goes so far, but a four-story building against the neighborhood, from my perspective, impacts the whole neighborhood, probably a couple streets back. So it's much more from my perspective than three or four people.
Shouldn't the question we be asking ourselves always, if what we're concerned about is the difference between three-story and four-story in the front? Right, it's either gonna be three-story or four-story, right? So what is that, fifteen feet, twelve feet?
I think it's forty-four versus fifty-four, so...
So ten feet, so what's the impact of that ten feet?
We also said this on that, the grade of the lot is higher in the back, isn't it?
No, no, I'm talking about in the front, I'm talking about in the front, right? So if it is...
And to me, it's the difference in ten feet for a piece of property that's across from the airport. It's, you know, commercial on commercial, as opposed to commercial on residential.
I tend to agree, but I'm just saying that's the question. The question isn't a four-story building in the front, the question is the difference between a three-story and a four-story, so it's that ten feet, and whether that will make it, and I don't know. I'm not an ex, not an expert, I get where they're coming from, so I don't think it's, I don't think they're coming from a disingenuous place.
No, no.
I think it's just a matter of, is our opinion better than theirs? Maybe it is, plus we get to make the decision, so, I don't know.
I think if it's, if it's literally three or four people, I would agree that that impact is lower, but I, I'm a little, you know, we rely to a large degree on your expertise, you do this, right? So I'm just a little surprised to hear you characterizing the effect of that additional ten feet along Sutton Street with some severity, as opposed to the additional ten feet along the neighborhood. I'm just hard-pressed to agree with you that it affects three or four people. I think because of that extra ten feet, the effect goes well back into the neighborhood, affecting multiple homes, and it's not just the number of people based on, you know, three or four houses equals three or four people, because that's who's on the, you know, the title. It's the number of people living in the neighborhood, the value, the cumulative value of that property. It seems to me that those are not insignificant measures impacted by that additional ten feet. I don't want to ignore your advice about the impact of buildings along Sutton Street, I don't, and, and I think, I hear it and I understand it, but it almost seems like I'm not hearing an equivalent sort of analysis of the impact of that extra ten feet bordering an entire established neighborhood in the back.
So how do we measure that impact in the front? Because I think we talked about and measured the impact in the back with the pictures and the balloon tests and the trees, there won't be trees in the front, right? And it's close to the road, so how do we, how do we, I guess I'm asking you, or anyone else, how do we measure how that would impact? Because I agree, I don't really care what's across from the airport, but I do agree with Eric's point that it's, people will be coming in, people jog along, people walk along that, if it's this imposing presence, that's a concern, and if you put, wherever we put the four-story, you can't really go back, right? So in the back, if we make a mistake, we gotta just figure that out.
But consider this, there's a lot more people coming by on Sutton Street, right?
True.
A large proportion of those are transient, they don't live here, and as they go back and forth, they're going back and forth, they're not staying there for the life of family. And that entire neighborhood is lives of families for a considerable period of time, not the two minutes it takes to drive by, not the three or four minutes it would take me to jog by.
Gene, any thoughts on other buildings similar distance from a road that we could, that are of a similar height?
What about a balloon test of the height of those buildings on Sutton Street?
But what will it show you?
It will show you...
What it looks like?
Yeah. I mean, that's what we're talking about, the difference of ten feet along Sutton Street.
So I don't think we even need a balloon test, just that, that, that one that Osgo did of the guy looking up from six feet, right? Just looking up, I'm just curious, what, I mean...
Actually, I, I think it might be easier to do a balloon test, or if not a balloon test, a gauge on one of the trees. I mean, you could easily do the geometry.
I think what I'm hearing you say is, okay, there's a trade-off there, and I think what you're doing is, you're saying, be extremely mindful of the impact in the back, because that intensely impacts the quality of people's lives, so that may trump the broad but smaller or more of this impact. I guess, though, does the ten feet really matter that much in the back? I guess, a little bit. I mean, it kind of, at one level, I get absolutely something that's four stories, it's gotta have a bigger impact, but I'm just thinking of the screening impact in this case is, you know, I almost feel whether it's thirty, three stories or four stories, the screening better be really good, or else we're gonna have a problem regardless in the back. And, you know, I mean, do you really think the extra ten feet is gonna have that big of an impact, right?
Well, when you say extra ten feet, it does sound like it's not much, but in this case, in a four-story building, it's twenty-five percent, right? It's a ratio of one out of four, right? That's not a small difference.
It's not a lot that's sloped up higher in the back, so with those residents right up against that, it is, it's bigger than ten feet compared to where it is, people driving by outside.
Not just the height of the visual, but it's another row of people and families looking down. And so there's sort of an active component there. I think people driving by, people jogging, they don't really mind, it's not a violation of privacy for people on the fourth floor to be looking down at the traffic and the joggers or the airport, right? But overlooking a neighborhood, ten feet is one of the factors, ten feet's not that much, I agree, but it's twenty-five percent difference in the height, that is a big deal, and it's a whole nother group of people looking down in the neighborhood. You'll still have that on the first, second, and third floor, right? But that fourth floor, I don't know, it just seems like it's more of an invasion of privacy.
Yeah, I mean, the central issue here in this project is the impact of the project on the immediate neighbors.
Right.
And if you think that's a material impact, that's a big deal.
I mean, I would love to hear what the experts could share with us about, how could we approach this so we minimize the impact on the neighborhood by making building three three stories, and talk to us about how do we then deal with the impact of the taller building on Sutton Street? I don't know, maybe there are some things, I just don't know. I don't want to ignore the advice, but I have to say, walking that neighborhood, and I, and I just have a much different perspective, I don't translate this as affecting three or four people. I think the effect's much larger, it's groups of families, it's, it's much broader than just the immediate bordering houses, and if you look at the cumulative value of property there, I think it's not insignificant.
Well, certainly had more than three or four people at our site.
So let's, so let's table that for one second. Couple of other things to discuss. Are there other items that we think need to be resolved? I mean, I think the new, I think the traffic has been pretty well discussed in the...
Well, I did have one question regarding this, more so the senior center, because I noticed there was a comment from DPW that actually recommended against the, the one-way flow out to Surrey. And I noticed it when I was out on site, I walked down there to see where that entrance would be, and I walked out to Sutton Street, and there's a pretty good, if you look to the left, there's a pretty good turn there, and before, I stepped out towards Sutton Street, before I knew it, there was a car coming, and I had to jump back on the side of the street, so what has been done with that comment, and how has that been addressed?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the sightlines looking left and right?
Well, yeah, the general comment from DPW is not recommending having that one-way flow from the senior center out to Surrey, because when a vehicle got to the intersection of Surrey and Sutton Street, there's a...
three or four people. I think the effect's much larger. It's groups of families. It's, it's much broader than just the immediate bordering houses. And if you look at the cumulative value of property there, I, I think it's not insignificant.
Well, certainly had more than three or four people on our site.
So let's, so let's table that for one second. Couple of other questions to discuss. Are there other items that we think need to be resolved? I mean, I think the new, I think the traffic has been pretty well discussed in the-
Well, I did have one question regarding this, more so the senior center, because I noticed there was a comment from DPW that actually recommended against the, the one-way flow out to Surrey. And I noticed it when I was out on site. I, I walked down there to see where that entrance would be, and I walked out to Sutton Street. And there's a pretty good, if you look to the left, there's a pretty good turn there. And before, I, I stepped out towards Sutton Street. Before I knew it, there was a car coming. I had to jump back on the, the side of the street. So what has been done with that comment? And how has that been addressed?
I'm sorry, you're talking about the sightlines looking left and right?
Well, yeah, the general comment from DPW is not recommending having that one-way flow from the senior center out to Surrey because when a vehicle got to the intersection of Surrey and Sutton Street, there's a, Sutton Street turns when looking left, and so it's a limited visibility.
So they indicated they thought it was a greater site distance. We did have the project traffic engineer look at that. He did, he said that's not the case. There are some trees that are going to be removed that's going to improve that site distance as well. I will say, our architect, who's also an engineer, strongly supports the one-way circulation out onto Surrey, not bringing the senior population back into the traffic mixed with the multifamily into that intersection. He's built a number of them. He, he just disagrees with the engineering perspective from the DPW. The, the comments as far as peer review really put it back to the board that, you know, you guys can weigh that. Our, our architect and engineer believe that the circulation is appropriate as shown on the plan. So.
And I think from our perspective, we don't mind or care whether the seniors go back out Surrey or come back through our property. We would defer to Mr. Catlin, who strongly suggested it should be as he-
He's, he's not here tonight, but I believe last meeting, he submitted a PDF that several of his recent senior centers have the same traffic circulation in one way, circulate through and out a different way. So.
To me, especially with the more in and out during the day, it's sort of like a school, like having like a set slow of traffic. I kind of like that better than coming back in. And I agree with your site line, but I think the, the solution there is, is cutting back the trees and things like that.
Right. And, and-
More on the town.
The DPW director, who wouldn't not be part of this project, but he also talked about narrowing the radius of the turn into Surrey Drive. It's a really wide right-of-way. It fans out. And so anything he could do to narrow that and add the stop line could improve the site distance as well. So, I mean, he, again, it would be separate from this project, but the director and I met on site and he recommended that as well.
Okay.
It, it could work either way, to be honest, but I'm-
So, Gene, any recommendations for us on how we, I mean, I think, I think everything else has been pretty well discussed and, and established. It's this height, well, I guess I have one question for people. Is, is, do you have any suggestions on it? And then for us, if we do want to change the heights, does that affect the tree planting and stuff, stuff like that? To me, the answer is no, just keep it all the same. But I think we should at least discuss that as well if we're changing the heights because everything's been based on the four stories. But I think the answer is no, but.
I, I agree with you. I do have another question.
Go, yeah, go. That's what we're doing.
So, the height of building three, it's really based on the impact in my mind of the neighborhood. Was there ever any thought from a design perspective that instead of forming an L between building two and three, if this is two and this is three, instead of having three form the L on the south end of two, have three form the L on the north end of two and split the parking lots? And the reason being, it moves three away from the residential area, a substantial distance. It still gives you that L shape in terms of the important configuration of the underground parking, but it changes the orientation of the L, splits the parking lot. One downside is then there's, you know, car lights. There'd have to be some fencing. But I, I just am curious, have you, did you at all consider that in order to move three away from the residential?
Maybe not on the plan, but we, we did look, again, as we're going through the, the analysis, we look at a lot of different options. With regards to kind of bifurcating the parking lot and putting it on two sides of the building, there's a lot of issues with that from both the planning and the safety and just a, an access circulation perspective. One, from a planning, what we've done now is we've taken asphalt and parking and we put it on three sides of that building instead of having it protect an open space. So that's impacting the quality of life of anybody living there. You mentioned the headlights and the noise associated with putting the parking lot. We felt a benign passive wall face-
Yep.
-compared to an active parking lot with car alarms and people starting their cars in the wintertime, early in the morning, whatever, fumes. It was going to be a detriment. Yes, we can mitigate the lights with the same evergreen screening, but there's not as much we can do about the noise.
Yep.
Fire, police getting to that other side.
You've, you've got a-
Actually, I thought that's an advantage because it'll give the fire the ability to go around the backside.
I just didn't know how much room there would be.
But it's, it's a dead end and you can't get out of it. So you've created a long dead-end aisle, which has a, has a safety concern with that. Both from, you can, you can get a fire truck in, but you can't get it back out. So there's no way to loop it back around. We had initial design that had actually the garage entrance coming in on the Sutton end of that building. That was actually on the initial site eligibility plans. And I think also the concept, it might have been taken out by the time we got to the town meeting. But again, one of the reasons we went to one garage entrance centralized where it is is it kept all that activity, the dumpster between the two buildings, next to an adjacent commercial use, which also does their loading and solid waste in that same area. And it keeps it confined instead of sprawling it out over the property and putting that use, you know, right next to the neighborhood. We looked at traffic and cars as much more of a detriment to the neighborhood than the building itself.
Gene, back to the, the kind of the question at hand, any thoughts on how, how we measure or evaluate this? I think we have a good sense of the back. How do we think about the front?
Just give you my opinion.
Yeah, please.
And looking at it and from a planning perspective, I think it makes all the sense in the world as you transition down that hill towards the senior center. The height difference is, you know, going from, is it 45 feet on the three-story to 35 feet on the senior center in the progression. I, I guess the only project I'd liken it to is Princeton Properties. They were the first one before you for a height waiver of 55 feet. The zoning changed for that. There was a lot of discussion about viewpoints from Osgood Street and will we see the roof of those buildings? And are they taking advantage of the topography? The commercial building, if you look at it now, the commercial building where the clubhouse is, as you, as you drive north on 125, I mean, you, you really see the roof line of that back building. And so from the perspective of the street view and that height on the four-story, I think it will be representative of the clubhouse out front and what will be the commercial buildings and the view of that rear building. Again, it's the broader perspective of everybody driving by and what that appearance looks like versus the rear. I think they've shown that the screening in the back, that the size of the trees they're proposing, conditioning it to be in perpetuity, that those have to be replaced if for some reason they're not healthy, gave a pretty good rendering of the back. I, it, I know you're saying it's broader and it goes further, but the further away you are, you're looking at those tree lines, and those tree lines of the mature trees are about at the top of the building. So.
Are you really going to see the scale if the front building is shorter coming out on Sutton Street where there's, it's not like, coming up 125, there's a clear viewpoint. And those buildings are pretty far back off the road. I don't know that you'd see the difference.
So what you don't see there is the commercial buildings along the front that are also going to be 35 feet.
Oh, there, okay.
Yeah. So the whole run of that will be commercial along the whole front. So then from the viewpoint and looking up from 125, we're supposed to really see the top roof lines of the buildings behind it. So.
So I'm the one that raised the use of topography for Princeton Properties. And, and I think I made that point pretty strongly in a great length. But again, in that case, there was nothing behind those properties that were being impacted by the height. So I, I think the, the analogy there is limited because it's, it's just the approach to the planes and you're not otherwise impacting a neighborhood back there.
I agree, but taking advantage of the topography was because of the residential neighborhood across the street and people driving down that road, not seeing this massing along 125.
Exactly. And, and that's very similar to, in this case, lessening the impact on the residential, but in this case in the back. So.
Right. So the idea is the same, but the question is, what is that? What is the impact as you drive by? I mean, I, I might be in the minority. I like how it looks. But, um, okay.
Meaning Princeton Properties?
Yeah.
So by right, the height on that back building could be 45 feet. So in terms of the 10-foot elevation, even if the lot is sloped, it's still 10 feet. They could build off of grade at 45 feet by right.
Any, so say, say we made a requirement to, you know, that, that the back building could only be three stories. Then you make the front one four stories. Any financial impact? I mean, I know you got to change around the plans and stuff like, but in terms of rental units and numbers and stuff like that, does it change anything for you guys? You can still get the same amount of units, right?
If we have the same amount of units, it's probably pretty close. We'd have to look at it.
Okay. I mean, I think you get the sense that at least a couple people are leaning that way. So if you could give us some information on how that may or may not affect you, I think we could definitely consider that as well as part of the whole package.
I'm also open, if you think about it and you come back with, you know, other concerns you have. I'm certainly open to hear from the experts, but.
Sure, right. You can appreciate that. We knew probably this would be the biggest issue from the very beginning. And we did a lot of moving the pieces around. And as we went through it and realized when the, you know, when we went to town meeting, there were a few little pieces that got changed. But we didn't realize if we designed the project the way we really thought it should be, which is what we did, we would then have to go to zoning board anyways, which we would always try to avoid going to more than one board. So we said, you know, if we just did the four stories in front, the three in back, forget it. It'll be 100 times easier, no zoning board. And we said, you know what? It's not right. It's just not right. Let's do it the right way and let's make it harder. So then we go to zoning board and they're asking questions about everything. We're like, oh, why did we do that? So we really do feel strongly, and I understand people, but, you know.
But is it, maybe an image, because I think you're searching for a visual image of something else where maybe that model makes sense. I don't know if it's in any of your other properties that you're talking about. But I think it's, I think what you're struggling with is the visual benefit of having the small building in the front. I mean, intellectually, you explained it well, but is there any picture we could see that would just show it, you know, maybe running through and how it all plays together?
Yeah, we'll have to think about that. Maybe bring something next time. It's a good idea.
So, yeah, that, that's it. I mean, I, I think you guys have done a really good job adapting this. And I think your intentions are, are very good. I think it's just a subjective decision about which is better. I don't know that, I don't know that we'll know for 30 years whether we got it right or wrong. I don't know. And maybe we, we'll never know. But I think that's what we're trying to decide. So, okay. With that being said, is there anything else other than this height of what's in front, what's in back that we need to decide? I, I don't see that there is. So I'd like to try to decide this on the next, well, let me take that. Is there, does anyone in the public want to come up and weigh in on this or anything else, really? But I would like to try to decide this case on the next date, if there's nothing else.
Thank you. Patrick Duffy, 59, Surrey Drive. First, we greatly appreciate your concern for the three-story building in the back. That's all we've been asking for from the beginning here. We understand that this project is going forward. Something's going to be built. Mr. Loft's description that they just want to make this, do this right, right is a very subjective word. One person's right is another person's left. One thing that, you got some great pictures about how well this, this building would be shielded by the trees, but you got them at the height of the leaf season. That's barely 50% of the year. Six months of the year, there is no cover whatsoever, none. And even these great, large trees that they've proposed planting, it'll be years before they can cover even a second story, let alone a third or especially a fourth story. So I, my wife and I really want to urge you to, to continue and understand that this, a four-story building is the problem here in the back, building number three. And it will affect the neighborhood. My understanding from, from the responsibilities and powers of this board is that you can limit the size of this project. You have the right to, to do that. And one thing that really strikes me is that they want to put up 136 units on three and a quarter acres. Whether you consider the, the extra land from the, from the senior center or not in calculating the floor area ratio, all the building is on just the one parcel. That's a lot of units. If that parcel sat by itself in a regular B2 zone, 136 units would be laughed at. It wouldn't be allowed.
True. Then maybe so. But if it went 40B, it would be more on that smaller parcel. So.
True.
Then, which, and, and, and sometimes that gets thrown out as just like this scary hypothetical, but that was actually going to happen.
We did hear that.
And could potentially happen. So we just have to keep that in mind, too.
Yes. But I think there's a simple solution to this. I don't think the developer would like it, though, is you have the building one and building three be three stories. You solve both the problems. You lose 12 units, maybe? You're still way above a normal expected amount of units for three and a, three and a quarter acres. Just thought I'd put that out there. Appreciate your concern for the neighborhood. It really will affect the neighborhood, Mr. Boynton, like you said. It'll go back several houses. There are houses, this is just our backyard, but there are a number of houses that will be looking at from their front yard for generations if you allow a four-story building to be put up back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. All right. Anyone else? Okay. So if we're able to kind of wrap our heads around the height issue.
Let me throw out just one more thing. And I'm going to tread very carefully here because I'm not an architect. But let's just for a moment, take a look at building one along the street and the massing on Sutton Street. And I think I take your point. If that's, if the entire fourth floor is 12 apartments, that's probably a significant impact to you. But have you considered some type of step whereby that building one, if it is four stories, the four stories are only on the south side, affording some type of patios facing north that allows you to charge more rent and make up the difference?
We haven't looked at that much. Sure, how, how we'd build that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not my job.
No, it's okay.
So would people be, if, assuming we, again, we can get our heads around the height issue. And I think what we'll do is just talk it through and potentially try to vote on that and vote on everything on the next one. I mean, to the extent you can give us any guidance about what that four, what that impact would be, good or bad comparisons, that would be great. But I'd like to try to vote on this on the next one because I think we've, I think we've done our job of evaluating, going out to the site, hearing from everybody, making changes. I think we're ready to put it to a vote. We just got to decide what we want to do. Easier said than done, but.
Sounds good. We could try to bring up, does a rendering up behind you or, we can try to bring one that's three and four for next time if it helps the discussion. How do you do that?
Yeah, just, I, I know, I mean, I know that in the presentation we got prior to town, special town meeting on Osgood, they had, you know, someone standing at six feet kind of looking up at the building. Now, their building was further, way further back, but just something to get that idea of, okay, if I'm, and I, I guess, I guess more to Peter's point, to someone driving by, that's what it's going to mostly be, or running by on the sidewalk, if there is a sidewalk, you know, what's it going to look like if I'm just going by? Three stories versus four stories, just for comparison?
It's a big building.
Right. Okay. Great. So continue to September 17th? So we can try to have a draft decision for that date? Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, are we good to go back to RCG?
We are good.
Okay, let's do that. Does any, well, does anyone need a break, five minutes or anything like that? Okay, let's go back.
Unless you got ice cream.
I, I have no ice cream.
I've got salad.
What time does the apothecary close? Are they closed? Eight, nine? You don't win friends with salad.
It's got bacon in it.
You don't win friends with salad. Okay. Back on the hearing, RCG, For High Street, application for an affirmative subdivision. All right, let's talk about the road.
So I think Brian can take it from here now that we have the plans up and walk you through the side of the road.
Sure. Thank you for, thank you for finding those, Monica. That's awesome. If you can go to sheet, I guess let's start sheet C 109. C 108, I'm sorry, one before that. Yep, up one now. So this sheet here, it actually defines the three parcels that we're making. It gives the legal descriptions with meets and bounds. It defines, and it's hard to read, I know, in, in area size, and it does show the existing easements. It shows the, the district boundary on there as well. That essentially this provides for the legal subdivision of the property that we're proposing here. It gives Lot 1, which is going to be the West Mill property, and then Lot 2, which was intended to be the Avalon Bay portion of the project, and Lot 3, which is primarily parking. That's a little bit of a, a shared parking area.
And that outer dotted line is the edge of High Street. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. On the right side. That is, that is the, the property line, the, the right-of-way limit for High Street.
And north at the top? And north at the top?
Uh, north is kind of a little bit off towards the upper left. If you scroll down just a little bit, there's a north arrow. I'm sorry, the other way, or scroll up. Yep, right on the top right. That's the north arrow there that shows the, the direction of north. So, that is essentially the three parcels, as well as in the center, the, the roadway is defined as part of, you know, what we had proposed originally for the location of the road to essentially align with the current curb cuts, the current accessway for the West Mill, as well as for the condominium complex. So, the intention originally was to try to duplicate the existing curb cut, match where the existing traffic patterns are to define that roadway. And, sorry, go ahead. I see a question coming, so I...
Keep going.
So, you know, since, since the development of these, we did get comments from the DPW that they, they raised concern over the, the actual curb cut and the location of the curb cut as it compares to the roadway across the street and potentially also the East Mill access driveway. So, that's where we've had some discussions with the DPW. We are in the process, and we do have two different concepts that we're developing to go back to the DPW with to talk about the pros and cons of each as far as traffic, safety, sightlines, as well as locations and, and traffic volume on, on what is the ideal location for this to enter onto High Street.
So, that was my question. Where, where is Prescott related to that?
Prescott is slightly to the north of this, and the East Mill entrance is slightly to the south of this.
Monica, if you still have that existing conditions. It follows pretty closely the route through the site now. We can, we can flip back. That'll give some context to, it's, it's pretty...
That orthophoto that was up originally, yep.
Patrick Duffy. What's this? I don't get it.
So, so one of the, the subdivision requirements in North Andover are to include all of the abutters on the site drawings for a distance of, and I don't recall the distance, 200 or 300 feet. So, we included, I think there are four or five extra sheets that are essentially dedicated to showing the assessors' maps and all of the adjacent parcels with the names of the owners.
I still haven't seen, like, what you normally see on a subdivision plan. It's like the whole length of the roadway with the lots clearly delineated that are, that you're subdividing off of it. I still, and, like, how long is the roadway? Is, where does it end? Is there a cul-de-sac at the end of it? Is it sufficient with greater construction? I mean, I don't know. Maybe you're going to explain that, but...
That's the following sheet. I was starting with what the definitions of the parcels are, and we'll, we can move on to the, all of the technical design criteria, including the grading, the utilities, and the roadway design. So, Monica, if you could go back to those drawings, please. Right there, that sheet, C109, actually shows grading, drainage, and utility. This defines all of the, the limit of the road. It shows what the grading is for the road, where we start the road on High Street on the right side of the sheet, and we bring it down to essentially where the existing access driveway is for the Sutton Pond condominium complex on, on the left side. We have curb cuts on the south side of the road that connect with the existing parking areas and the existing loading docks for the West Mill facility. And then on the north side, this actually duplicates what the original Avalon Bay proposal was with the two curb cuts entering into the Avalon Bay site. So, this provides the, the centerline geometry, the grading, and if you, if you look, and it, I think you, you should have gotten a, a full set in your packet as well. There's the, the catch basins, the drainage that is associated with the access road. The utilities in this location are actually going primarily through the, the sites and not necessarily through the subdivision road because there is a sewer main that is currently through the, the lots two and three in the proposed subdivision. And I believe the water also will, will tie directly into High Street for a connection as well. So, this road doesn't have the typical water and sewer in it, but this does show the geometry of the road. And if you go on to sheet C110, it gives you a plan and a profile view, which is probably more typical to what you're accustomed for a subdivision. And this shows you what the vertical geometry is. It shows you the pipe networks, as well as the, the structures that are in the road. And this is an instant where, where because of the geometry, because we're ending at the existing driveway for the condominium complex, we are requesting a waiver that there is not a cul-de-sac at the end because each one of these properties and each one of these uses will have access for fire trucks, for fire turning, for anything that would be necessary that you would need to turn around for in a normal subdivision roadway.
Yeah, I'm surprised you don't understand that. I mean, it, you're going up with a 50-foot right-of-way to the edge of the property, right?
Correct.
And at the very edge of the property, what property are you abutting?
In which location?
At the...
On the western end there?
Yeah, the western.
That's the, that's the property line for the Sutton Pond condominium.
Okay.
Where their current driveway is.
That's a drive.
Correct.
Okay.
So, this will provide a road that then terminates at the current driveway for the Sutton Pond condominium.
So, but there, you're saying that you want us to waive any construction of any kind of cul-de-sac or hammerhead or anything there?
That's correct.
And how, what happens if you go to the end of that, and you want to turn around then?
At the end of that, if, if your destination is Sutton Pond, you can go into the Sutton Pond site, and the access will not necessarily change on that. So, if there's a fire truck, if, you know, emergency access to turn around at the Sutton Pond Mill, or Sutton Pond condo complex, that's unchanged from what it is currently. If the access is required to be on the south side for the, the Mill complex, then that access is also unchanged. That, that, there, there are a number of, of possible driveways that give access for emergency that can be used for turning around for fire apparatus similarly on...
Turnaround is on the private, on, on the individual lots.
That's correct.
Not...
As part, as part of those developments, that's correct. That's correct. In this case, it is. And that's how it's currently functioning.
Right.
So, that's, that's why we, we took that approach.
And it's not going to be a public way, correct?
Correct. That's a private way. It's intended to be private.
Okay. But it's built according to all the rules and regulations of the framework?
Yep. And if you move down to the next sheet, which is C111, it does outline what the roadway design criteria are, and this is taken right out of the subdivision regulations for North Andover. And again, the, the difference here is we're, we're proposing a 50-foot right-of-way and two 13-foot travel lanes because of the short distance and the low speed that's associated with this. In a normal, I'm sorry...
Associated with what?
With this project, with this location.
So, so it's a 26-foot paved, I mean technically the whole thing is paved, but...
Well, it, it actually isn't, and we, we are proposing improvements...
What I'm trying to understand is, after the 26 feet, what happens? Do you, is it a berm? Is it, is it something more substantial?
It's sloped granite curving is what we're proposing.
Okay, so it is granite curving, yeah.
And on, on the, I'll call it, on the Avalon Bay side, we're proposing a vegetated strip and then sidewalk. And on the Mill side, we're proposing that those, that there is no sidewalk because that's right where the loading dock is, and there are large open areas. So, we're proposing to keep pedestrians on the north side of the road. And on the south side, there are a couple of planted islands that are being proposed with the slope granite curving around those, and to further define where the access points are, where the parking area is, and where the loading docks are.
Are there any other waivers being requested other than the cul-de-sac?
There, there are a, a number of, I think, more, more technical waivers that are associated with lot and house numbers haven't been assigned yet by the DPW and aren't shown on the drawings. The vertical datum that we use, was used for development of this project is NAVD 88, not NGVD 29. NAVD 28 is associated with Mass GIS and normally all of the, the available online information. So, that's what we use for a datum. Hopefully that the board is, is amenable to that. There's a summary of, of covenants and restrictions that will be included. There's currently now a, an ALTA survey that can be provided that does include that information. And then actually, another one is that the scale your requirement is for one inch equals 40 feet, and because of the small size of this road, we're proposing one inch equals 20 feet. So, it is a variant, or it is, it is a deviation from the requirements. It does show more detail, and it's a better scale, and it makes more sense.
The drawing?
So, for the drawings, correct. That's, but that's a requirement in the subdivision. Permanent benchmarks have not yet been laid out. That, that's something that we would do prior to construction, similar to the centerline not being laid out in the field, which is also a requirement that, until we had a, a discussion about where the road should be located, we, we've proposed not laying out the centerline until we get to a further point down the road here. Those are the, primarily the technical waivers that we would be looking for, for the project. It is approximately 425 feet.
I, I will say, the other road design choices we made, and I think we qualify as waivers, are that for commercial subdivisions, there could be a 60-foot right-of-way requirement and 30-foot paved road. In this case, we're proposing to use the residential requirements as we're proposing a residential project on Lot 2 and just parking on Lot 3. As Brian said, we think all, all you really get out of a wider road is higher speeds. We're trying to create a friendlier pedestrian environment, keep traffic moving. As far as the right-of-way, it's sort of inconsequential. High Street itself is a 50-foot right-of-way, so to go to a 60-foot right-of-way seems unnecessary for the scale of the project that we're proposing here. Those are the only...
Uh, the next page, uh, before that, the other direction, I think. Yeah, that provides the profile of the road.
When you hit High Street, right?
Um, yes.
Okay, so it goes down?
Yep.
So, in catch basins and all that sort of stuff, how, every 50 feet, or how you doing that?
I, I'm sorry, say that again.
Catch basins.
Uh, the catch basins, I think we have two sets shown for the project. It's, it's essentially an improvement over what's currently out there now from a drainage point of view. It looks like there's one set shown on the, on that subdivision roadway. So, it's collecting approximately 250 feet from High Street into that set of catch basins.
So, where do you guys stand with the discussions with DPW?
We met with the DPW onsite. We looked at the, the site distances. If we were to align the roadway with the road across the street, or if we were to align the roadway with the East Mill entrance. And we're in the process of putting concepts together of both of those. The site, the site distances are actually significantly better if we move the road further to the, I guess it would be like the southeast, to align it more with the East Mill, because the road turns slightly, and there's a, there's a vertical rise as you head further to the north. I guess it would be there. So, you know, what, what we want to do is continue to work with the DPW and come up with what they think is the best solution for this area. We do understand that there's an existing issue with the intersection across the street, and our goal with this project is to mitigate any impacts from the project and not necess, we're not necessarily going to be able to solve a problem that already exists on the street. We're trying to do the best we can to make improvements where, where there are potential issues associated with the project currently.
And you're not worried you need to do any cutting and filling for this road, right?
That's correct. It's, there, there will be some minor cutting and filling to create this roadway section, to improve drainage, to improve and promote the way that the roadway should function. But it's, it's not a significant change of grade. No, we're very closely matching grade. And you can see on this actually the grading plan where the existing contours are tied off by the proposed contours within, you know, probably 10 or 15 feet from the sidewalk, or from the back edge of the, of the roadway in all locations where we're tying back into grade. So, it's very similar to existing grades, but we're trying to improve drainage, improve the, the function of the site.
I think, just for context, the overall concept is to preserve and improve the access for everything already using that road, so that the entrance, the access from High Street to the Sutton Pond condominiums would be essentially a similar route, accomplish the same thing. All the access into the West Mill parking lots and loading docks would be functionally the same and preserve that. So, the road in its current location accomplishes all of that. Wherever we put the curb cut onto High Street, you know, it, it's sort of three choices with different trade-offs. It's been functioning that way since it existed 100 years. There's, there was obviously a train that went through that. And I think in any event, all those choices are not within what is typical subdivision control setback from a, from a intersecting road. So, we're just trying to find ways to improve an existing condition, which is going to be there one way or the other. And I think preserving those grades and improving some of the stormwater just in the road itself helps set up the development across the street and have less impact.
Okay. So, why don't we take any, well, from your perspective, what, what happens next?
Well, I think one of the things we want to get some feedback is just as far as these design choices about the width of the road and the width of the, the width of the right-of-way. Because I think the way we're looking at intersection with High Street, one way or another, with the DPW is that the road would essentially be the same. It would, you know, turn a little bit more toward Prescott Street, or turn a little bit back toward East Mill. In any event, it's, it's a movement of, say, 50 feet in one direction at, at most, and still intersecting the rest of the stuff. So, the general design and function of the road, if there are any concerns from this board on, on the way we've been approaching it, we'd like to know that and make sure we incorporate that with any of the other comments in the DPW before we come back.
I mean, I'm fine. I think it's fine. I think 26 paves is fine. So, I think, and, I mean, that, when he went through and explained it all, the, the need for, I don't think you need a cul-de-sac here, given that there's usable access. I mean, to me, just separately delineating, they extended the right-of-way, putting the granite curving in so that it's clearly a, a right-of-way, and there's, as you said, screen, on one side, there's, there's a path to walk on, on the other side, there's whatever's appropriate for the access to the buildings. But I think the delineation, as long as it's cool to delineate at all length, in my mind, I think we're okay on this by itself, as a subdivision.
The department, fire department looked at the subdivision plan. They felt that they had sufficient churn radius.
Okay. I don't have anything else. Okay. I think, you know, I think next step's then solving that DPW issue. All right, so if, if, we will take public comment, if anyone wants to comment on this portion.
The only other thing is I don't know about time, you know, whether, because subdivisions are under a clock, I, I don't know how far we're extending.
We have an October...
After the 15th, extension. So, allowed one more extension.
Yeah.
So good, okay.
I mean, it would be helpful to have a, the Avalon concept at least, so we can visualize what we're talking about with the road with, with their concept. So, I don't mind doing this kind of ahead of time because you got to do something first, right? But I think that will be helpful, at least in my mind, to put his, okay, a vision of what this is. Okay. Anyone have any comments about the subdivision? Again, we're not talking about the special apartment or anything, just about the subdivision and the roadway? No? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Steven Saracino, 102 High Street. I'm a direct abutter. I'm not opposed to something being developed. At some point, I understand the gentleman has to build on it, or can and has the right to build on his land. However, I feel some of the waivers that they are asking for shouldn't be allowed. I don't understand why it is that they don't have to follow the subdivision bylaws. There's only two ways to subdivide land, as far as I understand, an ANR plan or subdivision. They've got a right-of-way that's, that's in existence that goes back to 1973 that was created between... that was created between the original owners and the owners of where the Sutton Pond is now. There's a deed in place that specifies what can and can't be done with that right-of-way. I don't understand how or why they're allowed to just take that right-of-way and massage it into a private way, not even having to call it a public way. I think it's...
It's not a public way now, right?
I understand it's not a public way now, and I'm all for these improvements. I think they'd be great improvements for Sutton Pond. I don't think that it meets what it's going to be used for, ultimately, with Avalon going in, or any other project going in. We don't know what's going to be put on those lots. And as I mentioned in March, when this subdivision was submitted, we didn't know at that point either, and I cautioned this board in making a decision, whether approve the preliminary at that time, which, as we all know, it was denied. I don't know what the differences are between the preliminary and the definitive, that would make a difference between approving something now versus what we did in March.
Well, they just, I mean, I think they just went through in pretty good detail, which is what we've been waiting for, how long the roadway is, what it's going to be, you know, how it's going to be constructed, what's going to be on the outside. The waivers that they're requiring, requesting, other than the cul-de-sac are all, you know, having to do with the drawings and things like that, you know, how, what paperwork they submit. So it's the cul-de-sac, and I think we went through why, where it ends, and how long it is, and what grade it is, why we may be comfortable with that. So we're going to base, although these two things are in tandem, and we, you can, they can subdivide the road without doing the Avalon project, right? They can, without doing any project, they can do the subdivision road. So I think we're going to consider it based on that. And then really, where it's going to come down to is, you know, they'll have this subdivision, and most likely approved before the special permit, whatever we, if we are to grant a special permit, it has to be something that this subdivision can accommodate.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's...
There is no special permit if there's no subdivision. There's no reason for it.
Well, they can sub, there's no, they can subdivide without the special permit, yes.
I understand that.
We're not going to have a special permit without subdivision.
I understand that. But if the subdivision itself is denied, there's no reason to move the special permit forward at this point.
Yeah, but we have to have a reason to deny it.
Well, that's why I'm here, because I'm cautioning the board to look at the waivers that they're requesting. I don't see how you can rely on private property. I know that you said the fire department is okay with turnaround or what have you. That doesn't sit well with me. If there's an emergency in Sutton, in the Sutton Pond condominiums, and a fire truck has to get in there, or an ambulance has to get in there, and there's somebody parked on this new street, creating a problem for someone to be able to turn around, and they have to go into Avalon based property to turn around in order to get in or get out or what have you, I just don't understand why it is that we're not looking at this and saying, they're creating a subdivision, we need to follow the bylaw. The bylaw requires the right-of-way to be sixty feet wide, it requires a pavement to be so many feet wide, it requires flared-out ends to go from twenty-six foot pavement to thirty feet of pavement on either end. Why are we not looking at all of these things, and why are they allowed to approach it and just say, "Well, we're asking for these waivers, and we're also going to keep it as a private way and not a public way, so we don't really need these things"? Why? From a public safety perspective, why are they not required to do that?
I'm not sure that they said all that, so, I guess I'm not sure that you're...
Well, it seems to me that there was some comments that were made about possibly not forcing them or asking them to put in a cul-de-sac. I guess I'm asking the thought process behind that. Why do we feel that a cul-de-sac is not a public safety issue? If I was taking a raw piece of land and I wanted to design a thirty-lot subdivision, I doubt very much that I'd be able to come in here and show you a five, four, five-hundred-foot-long road without a cul-de-sac.
I think, John, I think you said it well about why didn't think...
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've been on this board for a long time, and I've seen a lot of them. I think the circumstances in the ground here are actually a lot different than in most normal situations, because, first of all, the, you know, related to the Sutton Hill condominium, if it hadn't existed and you needed to create the frontage, you probably would put cul-de-sac in, because you'd have to, because you wouldn't be able to get the frontage in another way. But it's already there, it's already existed. There's also a provision, you know, under the law, that the preference is to continue through, and a fifty-foot right-of-way right into that property, which already has access, I think it's sufficient.
Right, but there's no way to continue through. There isn't.
Well, it continues into the property.
No, I understand it continues into the property.
I mean, I understand where you're trying to go, you're trying to, but you're, I think personally, you're barking up the wrong tree on this. I think you're trying to drop some technical...
This road is going to be the only way out for the people who live in Sutton Pond.
It already, that's already the reality of the situation.
No, I understand that, but we don't know if Avalon's going to happen or not.
No, we don't.
We don't. But something's going to happen, so it's going to add traffic to this road. It's going to create congestion on this road that isn't there now. So I feel that the road should be brought up to subdivision standards.
Well, right, but, you know, because I think you know something about engineering, there's ways to get around that, I mean, you can, it would be pretty simple if push came to shove, to have the Avalon project, or the equivalent of the Avalon project, go right out to the High Street without creating the subdivision road. So, I mean, you know, I think you're making a good faith attempt to improve the situation on the ground here, and make it superior to what is already there. I mean...
Well, I think the road is helping them maximize the use of this land. Let's face it, if they went for an A&R, they wouldn't be able to develop it as much as they are. They're creating more frontage...
You're not going to be wrong, but let's, fair enough, your point's made, I just don't happen to agree with it completely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. So when do you want to come back? When would be sufficient? If you're going to come back, I'd like to have something to discuss. So is the seventeenth good, too soon?
Well, I think Avalon's coming, scheduled to come in on seventeenth. We wanted to see their plan beforehand. We could come back on October first.
You gave granted a continuing to the seventeenth, and I've been told that they should have a basic plan to you in time for that meeting.
So October first, I think that'll give us time to present anything to DPW, get any peer review, and to get all that done before we can come back to you. You can see the Avalon proposal.
Okay, great.
And I guess, before we move on, one question I had is, as we're working with the DPW, is it fair to assume that when the DPW makes a recommendation on which of these alignments and which location is ideal, from that point of view, that that's something that the board would typically, you know, and I don't want to say necessarily agree with, but you would typically take stock in the DPW's recommendations? And I'm just thinking from a, you know, timing for us to revise drawings and revise plans in between...
Because they say it, doesn't mean we'll accept it, but we do take a lot of credence, and if there's a disagreement between you and them, that makes it harder for us. If you guys are in agreement, I think that makes it easier for us. It doesn't guarantee anything, but yes, I think we do take stock in it.
Thank you.
Okay, so continued until October first. But as I said before, the, we will talk about the, as of now, we're scheduled to talk about the special permit application for Avalon Day on September seventeenth. Okay. John, how long, how long are we going to do on sixteen hundred Osgood?
As long or as little as you want.
That's fine. Now, if I should take a bathroom, let's take like a three-minute recess while I take a bathroom break, and then come back and do sixteen hundred Osgood, as long as people want to.
Based on conversations with the planning department, like the week before, I bet how many people were in there.
Shouldn't have been here, no, second blind, they keep us...
It's hard to hear, it's very...
But the truth is...
The mics don't project. They don't project.
Can't say anything. Well, you know what? I may hand them out, yeah, while we're on break. Probably at the table, both you and Nate maybe. Hey, Brian.
Did you post that?
Yes.
I'm so serious.
Yeah, but I'm not serious.
I'm not, I'm not serious.
You know a lot of friends out there?
First, what we question, very interesting, how we manage this couple. Friends who are, that the guys should have, maybe you're, you know, you're...
Were you worried about your...
They have a copy, they might use that to their...
Want me to use mine?
I don't remember that.
I just want to like, it's me right now, so...
Just practicing. I'm just practicing.
I work through the, up and down, and you see, you know, it's like, really, you see a lot of, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, that's my, that's my, that's my...
Just practicing.
I'm just practicing.
Do I have to read all this? All right. Back on sixteen hundred Osgood, sixteen hundred Osgood LLC, application for planning board approval, proposed one-lot preliminary subdivision plan on parcels of land consisting approximately thirty-one point oh six acres, located on the west side of Osgood Street at what is known as sixteen hundred Osgood I-two zoning district. Sixteen hundred Osgood, sixteen hundred Osgood LLC, application for site plan review and parking, special permits, and Article eight, Part three, Article eight, Part one, one ninety-five dash eight point eight, and Article ten, one eighty-five, ten point seven, of Chapter one ninety-five, Northern Resoling bylaw. Applicant proposes to redevelop a twenty-seven point oh seven acre portion of approximately a hundred and sixty-seven point eight acre site, commonly known as sixteen hundred Osgood Street, includes a rehab of approximately three hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet of existing buildings, known as Buildings Number twenty and twenty-one, along with fifteen hundred parking spaces, and with upgrades to parking, access, utility, stormwater management, lighting, landscaping, and other associated improvements, I-two zoning district. Sixteen hundred Osgood, Hillwood Enterprises LP, application for site plan review, Article eight, Part three, parking, Article eight, Part one, one eighty-five point eight, eight point eight, building height, Article seven, one eighty-five, seven point four, and one eighty-five attachment, three. Town in North End, over Table two, summary of dimensional requirements, footnote eighteen, the floor area ratio. Article seven, one eighty-five, seven point six, one eighty-five attachment, three. Table two, footnote nineteen, special permits on Article ten, one ninety-five, ten point seven A, of Chapter one ninety-five. Applicant proposes redevelopment of a hundred and nine point six seven acre portion, or portion, oh, I think I said should be acre, maybe? Portion of, proposed Lot B of an appropriate one hundred and sixty point, seven point eight acre site, commonly known as sixteen hundred Osgood. Proposed e-commerce storage warehouse and distribution facility with accessory office and other uses, consisting of a five-story building, including approximately three million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-seven square feet of gross floor area, with upgrades to parking, access, utility, stormwater management, lighting, landscaping, and other associated improvements, I-two zoning district. Sixteen hundred Osgood Street, sixteen hundred Osgood LLC, application for large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system site plan review, Article eight, Part twelve, setback modification, special permit, Article eight, Part twelve, Section one ninety-five, eight point eight D, and Article ten, one eighty-five, ten point seven A, of Chapter one ninety-five. Redevelop, applicant proposes redevelopment of thirty acre portion, this is proposed Lot C, of the approximate one hundred and sixty-seven point eight acre site, commonly known as sixteen hundred Osgood, for large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system. The proposed project will include the relocation redevelopment of a portion of an existing six-megawatt solar energy system, on to proposed Lot C for purposes of a large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system, including upgrades to access, utility, stormwater management, lighting, landscaping, and other associated improvements, I-two zoning district. Is that all?
Have we already gone on too long?
I think that's everything, okay. We will hear all of these new public hearings together.
That's our request.
If there's anything that you want to specifically highlight as to any specific public hearings, or move any different speeds, let me know, but as of now, we'll hear them all together and discuss them all.
Okay, appreciate that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board. For the record, John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn. In addition to Brian Vaughn of my office, we have with us Sean O'Brien, Vice President of Development for Hillwood, Nate Kershner, Senior Project Manager with Langin Engineering and Environmental Services. Also wanted to acknowledge the presence of representatives of the site owners, sixteen hundred Osgood Street LLC, as well as Osgood Landing LLC, including Ellen Keller, Senior Vice President of Aussie Properties, as well as Michael Rosen of Roberto Israel Wine, are the owner's attorney. We know we're at the end of a long evening, but this introduction is really intended to provide a general overview of the project, and the multiple projects that are involved within it. The presentation that we have is substantially identical to what most of the board members have seen in the past, and so what we'd like to do, just given the hour, is try to hit the highlights of some of the changes that, or adjustments that we've made since we had been before the board back in May, in terms of the rezoning effort, as well as since special town meeting.
And is the presentation part of the record?
Yes, it is.
All right, so yeah, that would be great. Hit anything that's different or new.
Okay, well, basically, you know, in terms of Hillwood Enterprises has been involved from day one, Sean, I'm not sure if we want to get into much detail in terms of Hillwood's background, in terms of capacity at all.
No, so we got the Hillwood, we got the Amazon, why don't we, can I ask some questions? So where are we in terms of, has there been any work with town departments, peer review, on the ground, changes, things like that? Has any of that started?
Well, yeah, peer review is, has commenced.
Okay, in terms of?
In terms of stormwater, traffic, civil.
Great.
In addition, in terms of the existing buildings, twenty and twenty-one, or actually twenty, which is being renovated to the rear of the site.
Yeah.
As part of the demolition effort, as well as the new building, those will be independently evaluated by both the fire department and their fire codes consultant, as well as the building department and the building department's code consultant. Again, as a separate part, a separate process, I'm sure they'll weigh in and advise the board when their, when their review is complete.
And twenty twenty-one are the ones where the solar panels are migrating from...
Well, actually, those are the two buildings that you see right on Osgood Street, where the solar panels...
They're going to stay.
Will stay.
Okay.
Right, and everything else, which is Building Seventy to the rear, is migrating to the proposed Lot C.
So what do you do with those other panels when they're, when you're demolishing and things like that? They just take them off and put them back on, or how's that work?
Well, I'm not sure if we've...
You don't know yet?
Oh, no, we know.
Well, we know.
So a lot of them are on the ground.
Yeah?
They're just moving from one space to the other on the ground.
Okay.
Very little on the building, actually, that's coming off the building, that's going to be demolished to move over to Lot C, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, because I thought, I remember we had, because we had, you're making those specific zoning changes to, as an accessory use on the rooftops, and I didn't think that was necessary, so I was just wondering.
Right, right. But just in terms of big-picture terms, what we've done is we've designed a plan set that captures all three proposed new lots, so that we're integrating stormwater, landscaping, and other improvements as a cohesive design, as if it's an entire campus, rather than doing a piecemeal. We thought it'd be easier, both for the board's review and also peer review consultant's review, so... Right, right. But just in terms of big picture terms, what we've done is we've designed a plan set that captures all three proposed new lots, so that we're integrating storm water, landscaping, and other improvements as a cohesive design, as if it's an entire campus rather than doing a piecemeal. We thought it'd be easier-
Yeah.
-both for the board's review and also peer review consultant's review. So, and in terms of who does what down the road, in terms of responsibilities for storm water, that's something that we'll have to deal with, with the current owners and also with the Conservation Commission, because that'll mostly deal with storm water. In terms of the presentation itself, I mean, we've, everyone is aware of the site in terms of the existing conditions. Monica, I think we could scroll through some of these. Everyone's aware of the existing site, its proximity, and in terms of location to other improvements. The existing site, as everyone is aware, includes approximately 1.9 million square feet of existing building, of which 400,000, approximately 400,000 square feet will remain. All the other buildings will be demolished. Existing solar, as we just discussed, is going to be migrated from the existing ground-mounted facilities, as well as Building 70, over to proposed Lot C. These are existing perspectives, which we've seen in the past. These are taken in the early spring, just identifying the existing landscaping at the site from a vantage point across Ozgood Street. So, if we could just go beyond that. And then, the existing lotting plan, which has not substantially changed from what we had originally proposed and what the board had seen in the past, includes proposed Lot A, which is in yellow, Lot B, which is blue, and Lot C, which is sort of a lighter greenish color. Lots A and C will be retained by the current owner. And Lot B, which is a little over 109 acres in size, will be conveyed to Hillwood Enterprises for purposes of development of the Amazon campus and facility.
John, is anything different on this plan?
The only slight difference is maybe about a quarter of an acre or so added to Lot A and taken away from Lot B simply to provide additional snow storage capacity for Lot A.
And when do you anticipate the subdivision request for Lot D?
Well, actually, Lot D is, well- Well, it is, it is except for, we have a proposed area of roadway, subdivision roadway, that's in pink.
Yeah.
And I was, I was going to discuss that a little bit earlier or later, but-
Okay.
But, but I can discuss it now.
Sure.
Lot C has, all across its frontage, wetlands, so access would be illusory. And so, as a result, we're trying to create frontage off of a proposed roadway that's in pink that'll provide the, at least 150 feet of frontage as a subdivision roadway to provide the legal frontage for Lot C. We've looked at shared driveway possibility, and that doesn't work because we don't have a conforming lot. We've also looked at a common access over, not over street frontage, but that doesn't work either, because that's only allowed under the zoning by law for residential uses. So, so we have to create a limited roadway. The roadway that you see that's proposed in that location is approximately 695 feet. What we'll probably do is reduce that substantially to about, between 150 to 200 feet to provide, again, the legal frontage for Lot C. And with the balance of that pinkish area of the property or to the west or to the back, probably add it to Lot B, because that'll be the main access point for Lot B, for trucks and other facilities to access into and exit from. And again, talking about extending out to Taverell and Ward Hill.
Is that where the road is now, or where the driveway is now?
That's, that's where the existing roadway is now. What you see out there today is, it's a paved area that's divided by Jersey barriers.
Right.
One side is about 24 feet in width, the other side is maybe 26 feet in width. And so, we're going to have to just redevelop that and recreate and reform that area for a private subdivision roadway of limited frontage.
Okay. I missed at the beginning when you said that C can't get access 1 to 125 because of the wetlands.
Right. Because of the wetlands along the frontage.
Yeah. You, you could just create a step road, a very-
Yeah, that's-
Small step road.
That's what we'd like to do, and we've submitted a preliminary subdivision application and a plan. And I assume this board will do what they usually do with the first preliminary subdivision plan in terms of a decision. But, but we, but again, we wanted to at least get the concept out there to the board. And again, that roadway show length is approximately 695 feet. We don't need anywhere close to that. So, I think we'll substantially reduce it to the-
But you only need something that goes in far enough.
About 150 or maybe a little bit longer just to get beyond the wetlands. So, and that'll enable us to extend roadway B a little bit further to the east, towards Ozgood Street, and provide additional land area that will probably give us a silver of land such that we can install our signage on the area that's not being used as roadway for Lot B. So, so that would be the purpose of that. So, just moving beyond these slides, Monica, this is, this is just the, well, Lot B is missing there, but Lots A, B, and C, this was just the identification of the relief that's being requested. I don't think we have to get into any detail. But we are consistent with the amendments at town meeting, looking for a proposed height special permit, as well as a floor area ratio special permit. This is Lot A, but if we can get to Lot B, Monica. In terms of Lot B, what we're proposing, we had originally obtained, as you know, town meeting approval to go up to a maximum of a height of 105 feet, as well as an FAR of one to one by special permit by the planning board. We are now, in terms of building height, we're a little less than 96 feet, and the FAR is probably at around .79 to one. So, we're substantially lower than what we had anticipated, but still within the threshold by which we need to obtain a special permit for both. So, that is the, some of the adjustments in terms of Lot B. In terms of Lot C, nothing has changed from what you've seen in the past. Again, the location of the panels, as a result of changes or amendments to the solar provisions, so the solar by law provisions, what we're trying to do is migrate those panels farther back from Ozgood Street to the extent that we can, because there is a 75-foot perimeter setback. And so, what, that is something we'll attempt, because in the rear of the site, it's mostly paved, and we'd rather migrate those panels more in paved area as opposed to the green area in the front. So, that's, that's our objective in that, in that regard. Just moving on to the next slide, if we could. Monica, this is the, thanks. This is just a, sort of a master landscaping plan for the site. As you've seen in the past, the, on the right-hand side or the south side of the site remains largely untouched. The northern portion of the site also remains largely untouched and vegetated. And, and the only difference is that there's probably a 10-set series of landscape plan sheets and details that are in the materials that have been provided. And again, in terms of the civil, where you saw the concept plan before, you now have about 115 pages of civil plans, landscaping, lighting, as well as some elevations within the materials that have been filed. The next slide, we've, we've discussed the subdivision. Again, this is just the locust plan with respect to the subdivision itself, with the roadway identified in, that's as Lot D. And if we can go to the next slide, please, Monica, that's just the detail of the existing proposed preliminary subdivision. And again, what we'll do is we'll pull that back, I think, further to the east or to the, closer to Ozgood Street, consistent with what we just discussed. This is a enhanced view of, again, looking north-westally from just beyond the police station at the corner of Orchard Hill and Ozgood Street, which shows the landscaping perspective. And the building would be to the, to the north. This is across from Jimmy's Pizza, again, identifying existing landscaping. That landscaping was approved by the, by the planning board when the 410 lot parking space site plan was approved for Buildings 20 and 21 about 10 years ago. And you've seen that it's taken fairly well. And this is a view just, again, off of Ozgood Street, after you've passed the northernmost access road, and you've passed the traffic signal. This is what you're looking at as you're coming down from Bradford towards, towards downtown, or southerly, towards the site. With that said, we can go into compliance with the storm water standards and a little bit about traffic. It depends on what your appetite is. We could also, I'm sorry?
I don't know. On the PowerPoint, they're missing, the paper copy has it, but the whole right side of the presentation is missing from what they're looking at on the street.
On the performance standards? Okay.
Yeah. So, just as a point of clarification, the paper copy does have it.
Yeah.
Apologize for that.
And for me, I might be lost on the storm water and stuff like that, traffic tonight.
Yeah, so...
Why don't, yeah, why don't we save that for, why don't we save, if there's anything really technical, let's, let's save, because it's going to go over my head right now.
No, I don't think we had anything technical to go over at this point.
Might a question on the last slide?
Sure.
No, no. The last slide in the deck.
Oh. Go back. Go to the end. Let's see what we got. Thank you. You got a question? Thank you?
Nope.
Keep going. Keep going.
Keep on going?
29.
Right there. Is the tenant still who we think it is?
Yes.
And is there any change to that?
No, no, no changes, no surprises.
So, that's what caught my eye.
Where is it? Yeah. So, what are we looking at here?
This is a, this is a concept plan. It's not, this particular slide is not site-specific, but what it does do is give you a representation of what this building would look like if you were standing behind Buildings 20 and 21 towards the front of, of the building on Lot B. But it is, it's a general concept in terms of design, what you might be seeing in that location. And we will provide more detailed architecture when we have a discussion on architectural design and so on. And, and actually, in the, in the fact sheet that we provided to the board, the last page is a, is simply a proposed, we're trying to, again, make this as efficient as possible. And so, if there is a way to sort of develop a schedule going forward in terms of the major topics, this was something that we had worked on initially with the, with the planning department, but obviously subject to change. But we wanted to try to develop somewhat of a schedule in terms of an ordering of various topics. And if there are additional topics that the board would like to address, we could certainly insert them now or insert them later, depending on what issues may arise. But, but our next scheduled meeting would hopefully be the 17th, at which we could discuss civil and architecture and landscaping and lighting. And, and the reason why we've pushed back traffic and storm water is that we filed our wetland notice of intent last Friday. And so, we want to have the Conservation Commission have maybe one or two meetings before we get into a meaningful discussion of storm water to make sure that we're on the same page with the commission. And, and again, that's all being peer reviewed, but we thought it'd be helpful to get some preliminary feedback on the wetland side before getting into the details of storm water specifically. And again, this is just a proposed schedule for meetings going forward. And obviously, some things may slide forward, some things slide back, but it's just a shot at sort of identifying topics that may be identified in the future that you want to get into more detail on. I'm sure you'd want to get into more detail on.
We're trying to line up, and we can try to line up our peer reviews to kind of go with this, so if there's anybody we need to hear from, let's try to bring them in when we're talking about these things. Okay. And this is, this is very much appreciated, John. That's, I think, a good way to do it.
And our hope is that between now and the next hearing, to the extent there has to be some exchange between the review professionals and also our architectural and engineering team, maybe that can go on, provided that the, that the feedback or the discussions are provided to the board as part of a follow-up discussion.
Please, yeah, please continue to work in the background and-
Might make it more efficient.
Yep.
So...
That sounds good.
Great. Thank you very much. So, continue until, oh, actually, is there anyone that has any public comment? Just so I ask. Okay, great. Nine, continue until 9:17.
Here.
Uh, in North Andover. I don't know where yet. I'm not sure yet. Well, to be determined. Either here or the senior center, probably. I'm not sure yet. Same time. And, yeah. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make motion to approve minutes for July 9th, July 16th, July 30th, August 6th, and August 1st.
Can we get a second? Hall in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.